Okay, good evening everyone and welcome to the March 28th, 2018 meeting of the Chapua Central School District Board of Education. The Board has been in executive session discussing the employment history of particular persons and negotiations. May I have a motion to reconvene the public session?
I move.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jeffrey Messner.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of this country. Let me go out with liberty and justice for all.
You have a choice.
Thank you, Jeffrey. Now for the President's report, I would actually like to move items 5.5 through 5.16. These are Chapua School Foundation grants. And I'm moving that to the President's report because we have a very lengthy meeting tonight. As you all know, we missed last week's Board meeting because of a snow date and we therefore have five budget presentations. So we have a long meeting ahead of us and to push things forward, I'd like to move those items to the front of the meeting. So may I have a motion on those items?
I move that we take 5.5 through...
5.16.
5.16 together from Chapua School Foundation grants.
May I have a second?
A second.
Okay, so then before we vote, I would like to invite the members of the Chapua School Foundation who are here with us to say a few words on the grants, which are very extensive and very generous.
Might I add that it's $190,127.67 total?
Thank you for the...
Yes.
Thanks for doing the math. I'm Peggy Mecado and I'm the Chair of the Grants Committee with Leslie.
You may have to move the microphone up so everyone can hear you in the room but everyone in the audience listening at home.
I have a problem.
The many.
I'm Peggy Mecado and along with us, the Chair of the Grants Committee and I'm happy to be here with Marjorie Truve, our President, and Jillian, our Vice President. We're very excited to bring to Board for Acceptance, as Jeff said, a $97,000 worth of grants tonight. They are covering all six schools. I particularly want to say thank you to everyone who, the parents, students, teachers, administrators, everyone worked so hard in helping us learn what they are considering doing in the schools and what they're looking for from the foundation. So we definitely want to recognize them and in particular Joe Grumondo and Josh Block who have worked very closely with us in making sure that both technology and facilities, everything smooths out. Also, I really want to thank our community because for the Chapua School Foundation to even do any of its work is because of our very generous donors, our community merchants, and everyone who participates in all our events. The grants are on the agenda and I don't know if you have to count what you want us to do for time, but it's all curriculum areas, all six schools, in a variety of capacities. And I don't know if you guys want to skip on to five other budget things, but we're very excited to at least start the budget night with offering our gift for acceptance to you guys.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And I would add, as CSF liaison, I know that all of these grants are to support innovation in the classroom, so they're not simply to continue programs that we have or if you notice, there are grants that consist of providing, you know, some material items, but all of those items have to do with innovation in the curriculum. So I just wanted to point out that that's the focus of all the grants.
All of the grants that the teachers bring forward really are about supporting teaching and learning in the classroom and they ask for a variety of different kinds of equipment, professional development, really it covers the gamut, but it really is about supporting innovation and teaching and learning for each and every student in the district.
I mean, I looked through it Peggy and you've got elementary, you've got science, you've got PE, you've got art, I mean you have pretty much everything covered that we do. And I always like to say, you know, as a district, people talk about the three Rs, right? Reading, writing, arithmetic. I think we have three As: academics, athletics, and arts. And I think the CSF always supports all of that with our district and our children. So thank you.
Thank you. I personally also was really thrilled to see the variety of the grants, having been on the Board and done this and I know all the stuff you have to read through. I thought the backup was great. I thought everything was really well explained and I liked that there were grants that were heavy on technology and then heavy on just old school, you know, blocks and stuff and things that also need to be reinvigorated, reintroduced in the classroom in different ways. I love the outdoor classrooms and I just really think that the Foundation did a great job in really making sure that every school got something and that there was really a variety of subject areas that were hit. So I thought it was terrific. Thank you. We're very excited.
I just, they talked about the breadth of the committee and I'll talk about the depth of $190,127.67. That's a material amount of money to raise and to donate and I thank you.
I just thank you on behalf of all the students and faculty, to the continuing work that you do in keeping us at the forefront of innovation and teaching and learning in this district.
All in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
So it's official, thank you so very much.
Thank you so much. I just want to also say thank you and give the plug that our spring benefit is important. That's how we raise our money. And I also want to say we have big surprises in store for the next Board meeting, so we're not finished. There's more to announce.
Oh, that's right.
And don't feel we have to leave tonight.
We'll save that.
Thank you, Marjorie.
Okay, so now I will turn it over to the Superintendent.
So I just wanted to start by just saying how grateful I am for our partnership with the Foundation. They work so hard to enable our faculty, to enhance different aspects of our program, based on our own faculty's motivation to improve our instructional offerings here. And Marjorie, Jillian, Leslie, and Peggy, thank you so much. You've spent hours with us during this grant process and really by us, I mean Josh and Joe, to ensure we can support all the great ideas that are now becoming a reality for our students. So we're so grateful for you and the entire committee and your partnership with us, so thank you. So before we get into our budget presentations, I just wanted to take a minute to thank everyone for their flexibility regarding the calendar. I communicated our adjustment to our parents already in wake of this difficult winter and being sensitive to time since the spring break is next week. We did the best we could to comply with the regulations, comply with our bargaining agreements that have certain school day allotments allocated within them. And then, you know, we had to keep in mind how our adjustments would impact our assessment schedule because we have our Common Core assessments in April and in May and then we have our AP exams. So I was also grateful that the Commissioner, at the last minute, gave us some flexibility and allowed us to go beyond the region state and add a Superintendent's Conference Day. So we're trying to do the best that we can with a difficult situation, so.
So do we need to vote on the amended calendar?
Right.
Okay. So may I have a motion on item 1.2.1 to approve the revised 2018-19?
Right.
I think this is...
Oh, 17-18.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm ahead of myself. 2017-18 district calendar.
I move.
I will second. Any other questions for Christine?
Yeah, well, two things Christine. One, thank you very much for all the hard work you did on this. I mean, ever since, I think the last time we had a calendar got all adjusted was when we had Sandy. And we've had quite a lot of storms through to deal with, so thank you. Vicky and Jane and I went to a meeting this morning at West Putt and they were discussing possible calendar issues in 100 and 80 days and hours for next year. So, not that we want to have to adjust that again, but I think what we're hearing is they're looking at this statewide, trying to do with the calendars and look at, so you might have more work to do again, but...
Right. And I would say that next year, we won't have the level of flexibility that we had this year in adjusting this year.
Right. But thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Warren. And I also want to thank the community for being flexible. We've had a few questions, but I think the community has been very flexible in understanding of the changes, so I want to thank you for that. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor? Please say aye.
Aye.
So, should we move on? I know there's more questions, but this is not the time for that.
Yes.
Okay. We're going to move on.
All right, so, go ahead.
The questions, you know, there'll be a question, the comment period, and I don't think it's going to impact the calendar.
Right.
And if there's something really momentous that will, then we will, you know, be flexible and see if we've made a terrible error, but okay.
Okay, so just, and then of course I'll be available after the meeting or at another time if people have questions. They can certainly call me and have access to me tomorrow. So we have many budget presentations tonight, but before we begin, I just want to just reflect on the conversations that we've had with our parents. John and I had the opportunity to participate in two forums. So in the context of those discussions, there were many comments and emails subsequent to both of them that expressed concern about class size in West Orchard in grade two. And then also, people were asking us to look at class size in the upper grade levels at Bell. So I just want to let our community know that we will continue to consider these concerns prior to presenting the final budget to the Board for your consideration in April. But I do want to just make a notation that we've read many emails. We know that there are concerns out there. We appreciate everyone giving their feedback to us, both verbally and in writing, because that's what we asked for. And we continue to look at this issue for our parents that are concerned. So with that said, I'd like to introduce Josh Block, our Technology Director of Technology and Innovation, who will be our first presenter this evening.
That's great, Josh. Usually people get applause at the end of the presentation.
Well, we'll see what happens at the end. Hi, everybody.
Better now, before it's too late.
So it's great to be here to present the first technology budget. And I want to sort of give a little bit of history of where I came from and how we came to this budget. As I began this summer through an entry process, I had the opportunity to meet with many faculty, staff, students, to bid to Craft Division for Instruction and Technology in the Chapua Schools. It became clear, and as I've known from the past, that we're doing a ton of things that are technologically related. A lot of them are not interconnected, so part of the work that I've been doing is creating the innovative mindset. So the umbrella on top of the light bulb here is sort of, how do we see the umbrella of innovation around all of the projects that we do in Chapua? From there, we started a K-12 Technology Committee. And along with that committee and the District Technology Department, teachers and administrators, came up with a Technology Department vision. The Chapua Central School District will create an innovative, agile atmosphere of learning that leverages advanced instructional technologies to support active learning environments, will continually improve our infrastructure systems, and support to advance district instructional visions and goals. So this is really everything that the Technology Department does will reflect this goal, which obviously, as you can see, came from our district vision and goals that we have previously had. From that, our Technology Department went on a retreat to Seven Bridges Upper Commons. And we spent a full day coming up with departmental operational questions, thinking about how we adapt our technology procurement and implementation strategy so that it aligns with the vision of the Tech Department. And then thinking about our operational processes for the long term and how we adapt those processes to support district initiatives effectively and utilize our resources in an effective manner. And then, the Department was really keen on thinking about how will we all be trained about what's new and what's out there and how do we then teach that to others? So components of the budget that we got to today is, there's three pillars: infrastructure, data, and professional learning. And they all intersect in innovative teaching and learning. So we're going to start with that. Why do this? So this is actually a slide that I've used from Alan November, who came to us in November, talked about new technology that he saw in Japan, which is a toilet bowl that automatically sends data to your doctor after you utilize it. And I was floored by this because it really does connect data, engineering, and also connecting communications and experts in the field that would report back to you any issues that they see. So these are the types of things we want to see our students creating in the future. So, and we need to keep pace with technology advancements. We see that technology basically doubles in speed and halves in cost every 18 months. And as a district and as instruction, we need to keep up with that. And we've created some skills that we teach in our classroom that are all around student-centered skills, application skills, and content knowledge skills. And these are integrated into our STEAM curriculum that we've been building. And we've seen this slide before about our STEAM mission and vision and the Technology Department supporting that mission and vision. This year, we are partnering with NYU and the CS for All Consortium. We were selected as a group of four schools in New York to work on a multi-year process to implement computer science curriculum in our school district. And we're beginning to develop what those skills that we would want students to learn in computer science and coding are, and then beginning to implement those next year and the year after. Through all of this instructional work, it's clear that we have a need, that students need ubiquitous access to devices during the school days so that when they need to do anything, when they need to work on a presentation in class, when they even just need to flip open a device to answer a math question, we realize that there is a need that we should be giving all students devices during the school day so that they can have access. So before we get to that, we always want to back up to what are the goals of doing something like that? If we say that we are going to change our infrastructure to give students devices, we came up with goals. These goals were with the Chapua Schools Foundation Innovation Committee and the K-12 Technology Committee, came up with three goals around computing in the schools. Supporting the Chapua students to be thoughtful learners, critical thinkers, by providing a technology-infused, active learning environment. Preparing the students to become collaborative citizens. So the first one is really about the individual, what do individuals do on computing devices? And then the second one is about what does the collaboration look like? So we want to make sure that as we see our devices used in schools, it's not kids' heads in a device, it's kids working with other students, and it's making meaningful work out of that collaboratively in our active learning environments. And the third one really is around creating an environment that increases the value and efficiency of learning time. So one of the things that I always hear about is login times to shared devices. We want to eliminate that. We want to make sure that every moment of time in a classroom is used instructionally. So we want to create an environment in our classrooms that maximizes that. And we want to make sure that our teachers are making valuable use of what they have and the technology around them to make good instructional decisions that don't burden them with lots of either data entry or any sort of movement issues with those so that it could really be seamlessly integrated into our curriculum. So all of that, this is going to be sort of the first mention of a one-to-one rollout for the Chapua School District. So something that we have been thinking about and we have been working towards, we are now working on, have been working on for the past six months, a plan of implementation for digital learning goals and digital learning in the Chapua School District. So the first phase of it is going to be thinking about our elementary schools. And what we want to do to make our elementary schools more agile and more in line with our technology goals is, over the next three years, convert them to an all Macintosh environment. Macintosh products and Apple and iPad products are much more geared towards our younger students and our younger students can engage with our instruction and curriculum much more easily with that. So an example that I give is, we just gave iPads to third graders to utilize, to borrow for the day from the K-1 students. In 45 minutes, the students all made a stop-motion animation. They put music to some of them and then they were able to compose them into a video. They had never touched it before. And we were able to see and watch 20 different representations of understandings of breaking apart and putting back together fractions as parts and wholes within their second day of learning about it. And it was so clear that they understood it. So converting into that, it just makes it very easy and very simple for students to use that. So the district wrote a grant to the Chapua Schools Foundation for iPads for all third and fourth graders. Last night, we presented it and last night, their Board accepted that grant and then we'll be presenting that to you for approval. So they have been a partner with us and they will be working with us throughout this process of implementing this plan. We also had our Smart Bond money that we haven't utilized and we're going to be utilizing that to get devices for our fifth and sixth graders next year. So what that does next year is allows every fifth and sixth grader to have a device and freeing up all of the mobile computing that we have in the schools for the seventh and eighth graders. And then along with that, we're going to be implementing a BYOD policy and a BYOD plan for seventh through 12th graders. And part of that, I met with Apple and Dell to provide discounts for computers for the families of the Chapua School District. So we're working on a family plan for that. So then, in the following year, students that opt out of the BYOD policy in seventh through 12th will be able to allocate them a device and have their own device. And along with that, we'll add iPads to our second grade classrooms. And then the year after that, we'll actually complete, we've got some iPads in K-1, so we will complete the implementation there so that every kindergarten, first grade classroom has enough iPads for every student. So the idea that, again, they're in the classrooms, they're ready to use, it's a one-to-one device, kids can utilize that singular device to create anything that they want to do. And the sky's really the limit with all of this. And our phased plan really is to be thoughtful about what we're doing, to be thoughtful about the professional development and our resources that we have as a school, and also to be thoughtful about our cycle plan so as devices age out over years that we can stagger the replacement of those as they come onboard. This also is to support our big work that we're doing around space right now. So, and as we all know, we're doing construction in all of our schools and creating flexible learning environments in a variety of different fashions. So as part of that, in the Technology Department, we are supporting innovative technologies to go in those spaces. And we also have been researching what display technologies look like in those spaces. So all these devices that we're talking about, in mobile devices, we want students to be able to cast those onto screens wirelessly throughout the school. And what we also want to happen is that all the spaces in the schools have similar display experiences so that if a student goes into a math classroom, or they go into an English classroom, or they even go into a fourth grade classroom, that the way they would cast to these displays would be exactly the same, that the keypads on the walls in every room in the school are exactly the same, and that we're able to manage all of that back in the Technology Department and know if there is anything wrong with them before we send out a technician to go five, four, or five miles away to a school to fix it. So as part of it, we're going to be looking at what display technologies are and how we do that, and adding on to that, how we schedule our spaces. So all of the pads that we're looking at, there's an example of one on the screen there, could have the schedule of the room that's on there. So especially like if we look at the iLab, which is a space where people sign out, we could see right there where they are. And when we build our L building and those wings, kids will see exactly where they need to go in those small learning communities. So next pillar of technology budget is professional learning. And this is, I think, the most important key of it because we need to help our teachers learn and work in a technological space. In order to do that, we need to provide significant professional development. This past year, Mary had mentioned her presentation, a lot of the work that we've done. So we have our Advanced Technology Fellows, we have a group of 42 teachers that are part of a STEAM learning team this year that are looking to study STEAM curriculum as we look at our spaces. We had third and fourth grade teachers go through professional development around coding. We have thought leaders that meet on a regular basis around what the global learning centers are going to look like and what work we're going to be doing there. And we think about our summer technology institutes as well. Next year, we're going to try and hyper-focus what our technology professional development looks like around the third and fourth grade one-to-one computing and digital learning. So all of our third and fourth grade teachers will be offered to come over the summer for three days to learn about this new paradigm of education and as well as have full support throughout the school year, similar to the plan that we had when we implemented our Math in Focus. So we're thinking that these are a curriculum initiative and we're treating them professionally developmentally as a curriculum initiative. And same would be true with our grade five and six teachers for next year. We are going to be doing a lot of work around computer science and STEAM and maker learning over the year as we start to solidify what that curriculum looks like. And then, we also want to make better use of our learning management systems and thinking about our use of Canvas and Google Classroom. And then finally, we're going and moving a lot of our work into the cloud. So the G Suite and then Office 365, which is the cloud-based version of Microsoft Office, that's going to be part of our technology staff development. The final piece, the nuts and bolts literally of it all, is our infrastructure. So the big piece of infrastructure that is a big goal of our department and mine is to seamlessly integrate all of our systems together and all of our systems with the learning. So one of the pieces that I always say is that if we have multiple systems that are collecting data from different places, somewhere it's going to be wrong. And we need to start connecting those together so that everything is talking to each other. And this is really going to be connected by a lot of cloud-based computing applications that we're seeing that are out there. The ones that we are utilizing and will be migrating to, G Suite, the Google Suite we use already, Office 365, we're going to begin migrating all of our Office work to the cloud. So that means that we would have access to any of our Microsoft files anywhere in the world. And we'll able to be at a drive or log on via the web to access our files securely through our systems. Canvas is cloud-based. And then JAF is in addition, and it's a mobile device management system. And that's a solution that is going to help us better manage all of the devices remotely that we have in our school district so that we know if there's something wrong with anybody's device, so if Kasum has an issue with her Dell right there, we would be able to remotely access it. And it also allows us to add some educational features to the devices so that if students are in a classroom, teachers and students can have granular access to restrict or add files to them and even putting them in testing mode if need be, which does prepare us for the inevitable online testing that is coming from the state by 2020. Communications, we've talked about. So final site, our new district website that we've been working on, and you'll find as of today, Board minutes from 2016-17 have been uploaded and tomorrow, 15-16. And hopefully, the rest of the archive will be up there within the next week or so. So we're continually adding to our district website as we continue to roll it out. And then the rest of our communication systems, and again, we're going to be working to getting them all talk to each other. And that's going to be key for communication with everybody in our school community. So our current inventory here, you'll notice some of the numbers are in red, some of them are in green. So we have a significant number of desktop PCs in our district, Chromebooks, servers, and printers. And we will be looking to decrease those numbers as we start to become a more mobile community and as our infrastructure starts to become more mobile. We look to decrease the number of physical computers that we have in our district over four or five years, mainly to just our offices. Classroom teachers will be getting new devices that will, like we talked about, connect to their displays. And we're really going to not have a need for a lot of those desktops that we have in our classes. We will be increasing, obviously, the number of iPads, MacBooks, and laptops in our school district. And also, as we open our new spaces, other displays. So for our four-year plan, you here see an increase in iPads until we get to 2021 where every elementary student will have... where every elementary student will have access to an iPad. The increase of MacBooks is for our elementary teachers and support staff, and that would complete basically our elementary school transition. And then the PC laptop increase is as we swap out our desktop PCs and as we add more laptops for students, that would be the increase over the next two years, and then the significant decrease in desktop PCs. It's also worth noting, as we start migrating things to the cloud, we're able to take our servers offline. And so, those expensive maintenance pieces start to go away from our budget, and that's important. So, our leases here, we had a large lease that was up this year, and we're increasing that by $50,000 to support all of the work that was previously mentioned in today's work, today's, today's presentation. The final piece, data. Privacy protection, reporting, analyzing, collecting. One of the things that keeps me up at night is the protection of our data and the protection of our data from students. And that's something that I've been spending a lot of time researching and a lot of time making sure that we have protected our network and any decisions that we make are secure. So, there's obviously laws that, that govern us and making sure that we're protecting our children and our network. We're go, we go beyond that, we make sure that we ask lots of questions before we deploy anything to the cloud about who owns the data, what happens when we cancel a service, where is that data stored, what is your protection, what is your network security like? So, I think that, which is why a lot of these cloud stuff is actually becoming more safe than our work. So, anyone I talk to, we make sure they have a 24/7 network security team. So if there's a media breach, they're required to contact us immediately. We don't have people in our, here 24/7. So, the hope is making smart decisions about what, what the things we put online are and also backing it up locally so that we have everything here in our school district. And finally, our budget increases are generally coming from the leases that, that I previously talked about. And then contractual services are the, just our contract increase that happens with our technicians that we contract with. And then an increase in state-added software as we add software to the devices that we're having for students. And questions?
I have a couple of questions.
Yeah.
And a couple of suggestions. I was on the receiving end of many complaints that were from a friend of mine who's a teacher in another district where they were given iPads and simple things, charging stations. There was not enough outlets, not enough places for kids to charge them, so they, you know, charged three or four at a time. So just something to think about whether it's part of the grant or not, it's a really important thing.
Thanks.
Do we need to do anything with our acceptable use policy in really having kids understand if they're using these app, these technology devices in class, what the appropriate way to use them is, how not to be sending messages to each other while they're, you know, that kind of thing, is there something that, that you need from us?
Yeah, so it's a twofold question, right? One is, we're going to have to alter some of our acceptable use policies between now and September as we do this. The second piece of it is that, as part of all of this, we're gonna add a digital citizenship component to the work that we're doing. And that's actually a full day of the professional development that the teachers will be receiving over the summer. So that, so, and this really gives us the opportunity to get students to think about what they are doing online and with computers at a young age. And, and we can start to mold that and start to get them and teach them. And this provides us that opportunity, we don't wanna make sure that we, we don't wanna miss that opportunity.
We also, I'm sorry, we also have to add a policy about students bringing home devices. So, our thought was that we would start that process after we had the results from the election and for the, and from the vote.
Yep. And one final thing with the website that is great and love adding all the new stuff, the chat app went away.
Yes.
And I know it wasn't, you know, a pervasive use, but there were certain ease-of-use things that the app afforded parents, you know, knowing what day the calendar was, if things, if we changed the calendar, updated on there. Is there any ability to create an app that people can access on their phone so they can get to Infinite Campus, get to Canvas, get the calendar, you know, the basics?
Oh, yeah, so, oh, that's a, that's a good idea. And we should, what we could do is create a page on the site, which then we could show people how to add that to their mobile device, that page. It's just a simple click of different, of different, basically the quick links.
Right.
From there, right? And they are working on the calendar updating and instructions for that, there was a technical issue with that that we need to fix. There's still some kinks that we're working out surprisingly after this.
And quick links would be browser-based?
The what, the?
Quick links, like if I wanted to go to a quick link on my phone, it'd be browser-based?
Yeah, so it would be basically a browser-based link that you could add to any, any device that you have, open it up and it'll just load up those links.
Josh, can you, a question on state-added computer software, can you explain that a little more and why it's going up?
Yeah, so it's going up for, uh,
Significant?
It's going up significantly for a couple of things. One is, you're gonna see that there is, the contractual services increase is not the full contractual service increase that we have for our technicians. So there are pieces that we're taking out of contractual services that were provided as a service through other companies for software that we paid a yearly fee for, that we're gonna be purchasing to have in-house, have that as, as a license. The second piece of it is, there has been a significant amount of increase of app use and web-based software used in our school district, and we wanna support our teachers with that. And one of the really successful projects that we've had is co-writer and snap and read, which we're having a parent night that got snowed out with. That was a grant previously, and we think that it's so important that we wanna pull it into our budget for next year, so that encompassed all of those.
I appreciate bringing a technology background, how you're integrating what we've been doing with management of the district with the technology there and sort of incorporating that through the rest of the school and the teaching and learning, so thank you for that. The only thing I don't like, I don't like that chart on the technology advancement chart, because I keep moving farther to the left of the chart, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah, oh, the, the one, oh, I'm not gonna go back to it, yeah, yeah.
You have to have like a geometric progression, so I see part of the right, I feel like I'm getting a little bit.
It's hard, I mean, and that's the, that's my, I think we all should, right? Doubling every year is an exponential equation.
Thank you. Thanks.
Just sort of piggybacking on Alison said, to, to, to think of all, like whether it's the charging stations or whatever, and, and, you know, I love, first of all, I thought this was very well thought out, so thank you so much. But the, um, the Wi-Fi capabilities and the internet, how is that in here to make sure that all of these work well and speed-wise? And how are we limiting and allowing certain sites for the kids? Because I know that that has been an issue at, at the high schools, so. And it, and it permeates with the athletic department and other things that are coming up, so how, how are we addressing that?
Great, so two great questions. So the first is about Wi-Fi and internet access issues. We spent this year and with part of our SMARTBONE funds and district budget, do, we did a Wi-Fi analysis of the school district and we added access points throughout the entire district and the instructional spaces to make sure that we had the capability for every student in a classroom to have two devices to work on our Wi-Fi at any given time, because we know especially here in the high school, kids are gonna be a device, you also have your phone as well, right? So that, we also doubled the internet speed of the school district over the course of this year.
Speed or the bandwidth?
So, I'm sorry?
The speed or the bandwidth or both?
The, both, the, both of them. So, we doubled the speed to 1.2 gigabit per second, and then we doubled the bandwidth from around our schools to get out, to get out there. So that's one piece of it. There are large spaces that are, that we know is sort of our next step that are difficult to add Wi-Fi coverage to. So, one of, a lot of that is being outside, a lot of that is being our auditoriums and physical education areas. When you have large spaces where lots of people will congregate, then that's a difficult problem for us to solve that we're working on now, for us, for us to figure that. And we're especially, the way the high school is laid out, that it's one flat surface, makes it that much more challenging to, yeah, to, to cover with Wi-Fi from there. The second part of your question was around protection and filtering and all those other things. So, our mobile device management system for the, all of the Mac devices, we are able to filter those devices no matter where they are, whether they're on campus or off campus. And the same is gonna be true with anything that we do with the PCs. And so, we are just testing all of that out now. And not only as a district level will we have the ability to allow certain sites or apps or things like that, at a classroom level, teachers will have that ability as well to make some decisions for their stu, for students. So, especially I think about educationally as we're trying to scaffold learning for students, you know, there are ways for us to filter through to, you know, educational research sites that are, that are different than we would for a high school student, we might wanna teach different research skills.
Fine, okay. Any other questions?
I wanna talk about professional development a little bit more because, I mean, I think these are wonderful opportunities for students, but of course, you know, it's not about the devices, it's really about what happens with the curriculum and the teaching and learning in the classroom. And so I know that you'll be having a focus on professional development for those grades that are receiving the one-on-one devices for next year, and then you'll be focusing on that, I imagine, for the, for the higher grades in 1920, for the seventh through eighth, I mean, seven, seventh through 12th grades.
Correct.
You'll be focusing on that professional development in 1920 as opposed to next year.
Right.
So, right, because the ones that are getting the devices, you know, three through sixth will be, you know, having that, that training. So, but my question is, beyond the professional development for the devices, what are we doing about professional development for the, regarding the curriculum itself? And I'm looking at all of the grades, because once the three through sixth will have those devices, I imagine that in the same way that you described what hap, what happened to the second graders and their understanding of fractions, I imagine that those students might be prepared for a whole lot more by the time they get to the seventh grade, for instance. And so, I'm, I'm thinking about professional development beyond what's required for incorporating the devices into the classroom. How are we preparing the teachers, say, starting seventh grade when those students will, will end up there, to match what, what their skills will be at that point in time?
Yeah, so I think two, one is, we think of all of the professional, all of the professional development we're planning is curricular-based. We're, we're trying to do very little, just get acclimated with your devices and here it's really about doing it in context of the curriculum. So, the, the second part of your question is, how, how are we gonna be sort of getting the teachers, if, if the third and fourth graders are coming to fifth and sixth grade and then they're going to seventh and eighth grade, right?
And I'll just clarify what I, what I meant, because those student, the students will be acclimating to the devices in real time with the teachers next year. But they will have already been acclimated once they get to seventh grade and those teachers might be just catching up if they don't have the professional development.
Yeah, so, part of that is, we, we will be having professional development for all of our teachers. I just think the intensity is gonna, intensity is gonna be for the ones that have those students in their classes right now. We, you, part of it that I'm thinking is that as those students are in with those teachers for the next year, and it's also not that, we have digital learning happening in our school district, so this is an enhancement to that. But I think your question is valid, and I think that we just need to consider, okay, how do we sort of balance the, the intensive professional development with people who require it and as well as start to get people involved in, in the professional development this year that we can manage, right?
And I think, you know, things like the Advanced Technology Fellows that we've had now, we're in year three, some of the tech coaching that happens in classrooms, embedding technology in all our professional development, those are the places where it just becomes part of everything we do. I think really, the coaching piece in particular is really helpful in helping teachers to think about, now I have this new opportunity to add technology, what else can I, what else is possible to really enhance the curriculum? And now, a few years ago, when we started using Google Docs extensively, that was a game changer in terms of writing, because the feedback was happening in real time while the students were writing, before something was submitted. So I think similarly with all of these tools, it's that embedded ongoing piece as well as the focus on some new areas, would you say?
Yeah, absolutely. I think just the piece of, the, the focus is for the teachers that, I mean, iPads are gonna be brand-new for these teachers and the kids are gonna be in front of them right now. But, you know, one thing that I'm thinking of is that having seventh and eighth grade teachers doing observations and doing peer observations in classrooms next year of the fifth and sixth grade, so they could see what's happening over time, you know, that's one way that we could think about that.
One last question, just about, since we already talked about the calendar and missed work, and are there technological solutions that we could look at or should look at so that when we are stuck home in snow days, when the people do have power and internet access, that there's stuff that can be done so these lost hours, we have to make them up anyway, the state's gonna make us do that, but are there ways to make it less disruptive, that we can use all of these great tools to help kids do things while they're home, whether it's video learning, whether they're virtual classroom, everyone's doing this from home, are there things that we're thinking about?
Technologically, absolutely, and we've actually seen some of that with some of our high school classes. One of the snow days, one teacher sent out a video through Canvas of the lesson that they were gonna do that day, and the students had watched it and then completed questions on Canvas for that. So, there are, so, a lot of teachers that are doing flipped learning, I know two math teachers that are, that are working on that. A lot of the software that we're looking at is based in our curriculum areas that really is at a student's speed and really enhances what happens in the classroom. Students can continue to work on that work as well, right? So if you think about, you know, and a lot of the things even around leveled books that are gonna be on the iPads, kids can be reading, and I, I think that we're gonna see a real shift in that. There's a lot of articles that have come out about, you know, what to do on a snow day, right, how to have the non-snow day and, you know, even, but, so, so technologically, that is all completely possible and being done in some places. And I think that, you know, distance learning, we've, many of us now by this point have done a distant learning course. And a lot of our teachers in the high, at high school, I know, I have really had hybrid courses since Blackboard. So, so it's just a matter of us harnessing that power and using it. I mean, and now with Google Docs, kids can even be collaborating on a presentation or a project from distance, so.
So, I would just like to share that we are very fortunate to have someone be able to lead our technology department who understands the infrastructure and the instructional technology component. And I think because Josh has such great relationships with our faculty in our district, you'll see some of what he's presented tonight is a departure from where we've been in the past and taking us in a different direction that will really enhance personalized learning in our classrooms. So, I, I wanna thank Josh for offering a presentation and a budget to you that really begins to transform learning in our classrooms by leveraging technology in a very different way. So it's really exciting, many of the ideas that he has shared with you tonight. So, thank you, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Thank you, Josh. (applause) So, now I'd like to welcome Jason Simo, our Director of Athletics, Health and Physical Education, who's going to share that component of our budget, and he's also going to talk about item 5.17 on the agenda, which is an opportunity for sports boosters to work with a private donor to enhance our facilities here under the, the, with the cooperation of the district. So Jason, I'll present that as well during his portion of the program tonight. So, welcome, Jason.
Thank you. So with regards to our program and our department, one of the things that we quickly established over the summer was trying to create an identity that separates us from everyone else. And discussing with athletes, coaches, parents, booster club members, we came up with the hashtag "The Greeley Way." And that's represented in a lot of the pictures that you'll see up here, and basically I just went through our Twitter handle and started selecting some of the, the pictures that, you know, was that, you know, was ta, were tagged with that, that Greeley Way. And it really, just to summarize, it describes, you know, everything just being a little bit different, a little bit more special, and representing everything that our student athletes are accomplishing, both in the, the field of competition and also in the community and in the classroom every day. So we're very proud of all of their accomplishments.
And Team Chow.
What's that?
And Team Chow.
Yes, absolutely, absolutely. So, as an overview of our programs, we have, you know, many programs that we're offering, a couple of things most notable here, we're trying to really develop our programs, we don't want to just offer teams for the sake of offering them. And looking at the boys' programs here, two notable things that I, I've picked out, first is the football program at the seventh and eighth grade levels. Our numbers were low, extremely low at both schools, so we made the decision, that was unpopular at first, to merge both teams into one and move them over to Seven Bridges. We quickly found that the instruction was a little bit better, the teams were buying in, the students were buying in a little bit more, and they had a great experience towards the end of the year. So it was very successful in regards to program development, and we were very happy with that. So that, that was one key piece that we noted in regards to the fall season. We again found that this spring, when our JVA and JVB numbers for boys lacrosse, again, we're right there at the borderline in terms of, yes, we can split into two teams, neither team will be competitive, neither team will really be able to, really be able to make it throughout the course of the season. So we made the decision again to merge them into one program, so we're fielding one team. And again, so far, it's been, you know, a pretty good experience in the short season that we've, we've had so far. But the focus really here is on building those programs and developing the success. Along the same lines with the girls' programs, a couple of things that I want to point out here, first is the, the JV girls' basketball program. Our numbers were extremely low with JV girls' basketball this year. So one of our focuses has been working with the town programs, we don't offer modified with boys' or girls' basketball. So we've started having conversations with them, with our varsity coaches, and just, what are some things that we can do at our levels to help support the participation at the lower levels and build up that interest in girls' basketball and in other programs that were finding low numbers. On the opposite side of the spectrum, our girls' JV lacrosse program had very high numbers this year, and for the first time, we're actually going to be able to split our JV into two teams. So we actually split those 40 girls this afternoon into a white team and an orange team, or a blue and an orange team, we were still working on the details, but we didn't want them to feel like one was an A and one was a B, we're doing a, an even split there, really trying to focus on the development of that program. Also the same with seventh and eighth grade, our modified softball team. While Bell only had, I think it was six or eight girls, that weren't enough for a program, we had a very large number over at Seven Bridges, so we're bringing the girls from Bell over to Seven Bridges, and again, we're splitting that into two teams, which is, was great for the future of the program. So we're very excited about that, especially because our numbers for JV this year really weren't where they needed to be in order to have that team, so we moved those girls up to varsity. So, that shift in culture and mindset and really focusing on the development of those programs is something that varsity coaches have really taken a lot of ownership on, and I'm, I'm very proud of them for all of their efforts, and grateful for their efforts. In terms of numbers of teams, boys, you see 39 there, and girls is actually now up to 39 with that split with the JV, so, the girls' lacrosse. So we're very excited about, you know, the opportunities that we're providing for both our boys and girls from seventh through 12th grade. In coaching positions, now with the addition of those two teams, this is now up to 102. And you can see, we're fortunate to get a couple of volunteers, actually, we just have one more coach that has offered to volunteer his services, so we'll be going through the paperwork and make sure that he has everything in place in order to be recommended to you for approval. In terms of proposed budget, there are a couple of line increases here that I think are important to really first begin with, an understanding for what our initiatives are within our department. I know this is very difficult to look at on the small screen. A couple of key things that show increases are our equipment line, our contractual line, our ice hockey line, and I'll speak specifically to those in the next couple of slides. But first, I want to talk about our main initiatives. Within athletics, there's three components that we're really looking at. We're looking at program promotion, program development, and also communication of our programs. With, in regards to program promotion, we've done that a lot with our Twitter platforms, hopefully you're following, and as soon you see our motivation Mondays, our Wellness Wednesday, that included, you know, G Week that started this week for us, and, you know, also the local and state programs. Both our fall and winter team, every single one of our varsity teams qualified the New York, for the New York State Public High School Scholar-Athlete Team Award. That's a tremendous accomplishment, just because last year, we actually increased the standards for teams to qualify for those programs. So, we're very proud of our teams and our scholar athletes in regards to that. Recently, you've probably seen a couple of our athletes on News Channel 12 for their recognition in the local levels as well. Also, working with the Booster Club, they've been a tremendous resource in terms of helping us, you know, get the word out about our programs. We're talking about some plans also and initiatives to support the transition of our eighth graders up to the high school, making them aware, and that's really just brainstorming a lot with the Booster Clubs, and, and they have a great pulse on, you know, the needs and desires of the community in regards to athletics, so I'm very appreciative of all their help. Program development, you know, Mr. McCleese, our new strength and conditioning coach that was hired last year, that position was put in, has just taken off, and it's really redefined the focus of our programs. There's a clear vision, a clear expectation, and we, we saw a lot of success this winter in a lot of our teams on, in the field of competition. All of those teams that saw that success were in the weight room in the fitness center with Steve, training in the fall. So we like to contribute, you know, say that that's a direct correlation, and, and thank him and the dedication of our students and coaches for really committing to that process. As a result, we're really, you know, looking at the fitness facility, we're very grateful for the CSF group for supporting our grant that we put forth through them, and a multi-phase project that we're hoping to put forth to support this initiative. Doing a lot of the in and out of season training, doing preseason coaches meeting, where we're really defining expectations for not only coaches, but throughout the entire department in terms of what our expectations are for our students. Event management, if you were at any of our games, either in the fall or in the winter, especially with those large crowds, that was something I put into my last report and for the superintendent, in regards to, that's a huge focal point right now. I know later tonight, we'll be talking about, you know, building safety and everything else. That's definitely on our radar in terms of after school, what we're doing to ensure the safety of our spectators or our community while they're at our events. And then again, just collaborating, you know, Mr. Grumondo and his staff, Jimmy and, and Dave here in the building have just been great in terms of helping support our needs, and helping us just develop plans in regards to moving our programs forward, and also again with the rec department. In regards to communication, this has been one of the, the biggest focal points for me, is really fielding all of the concerns that, you know, parents have, students have, coaches have, and really trying to streamline things. And, you know, we've come up with this Sports U program, and I, I'd be remiss if I didn't recognize David Hayes for all of his work. You know, we were really the first ones to start with that web, website turnaround, and, you know, David explained that the whole district was going that way, but he was, you know, willing to help me just move things along in terms of athletics, and not only helped me move it forward, but also giving me the, the feedback that was required to really make it efficient and user-friendly. So, we've really done a lot with our website as well, and also with communication, we have our preseason parent meetings, where parents are invited in so that we can explain to them, you know, the proper channels of communication, we talk to them about expectations, things that they should expect from us, things that we hope to expect from them. And in regards to physical education and health, you know, this being my first year, one of the biggest things that we've done is just try to review things such as teaching practices, schedules, and how our, our practices and schedules align to the state mandates, and also keeping in mind what student interests are. Also looking at our equipment, addressing any safety concerns that we may be having, and also now starting to take a look at some of the alignment across levels and in between buildings. We have some great teachers and some good practices that are happening within our district that we're hoping to highlight and enhance throughout the entire district. And we're also hoping that we can do that through the phys ed and health custodium that's offered through Bozies. Okay, so potential additions within our athletic budget are in a couple of areas. First is equipment. We talked about, you know, the CSF grant that we were successful in attaining, and that was a part of a multi-phase project that we're looking at, because it's not just the fitness center. Long-term wise, that whole athletic, we're hoping to turn that entire athletic center into a center that resembles a lot of the other teaching spaces here in our district. You know, when you walk around the district, we have many different schools that come and visit our, our school, which is now becoming a showcase for, you know, the future of education, and we're hoping that in time, we can also do the same with our fitness facility, or in our athletic center. You know, part of that includes, you know, not just upgrading the fitness center, but taking that and moving it over into the EF gym, in hopes that the current fitness center can then be turned into a multipurpose studio that can, you know, support dance, yoga, Pilates, things of that nature, that can be used just by all of our students, regardless of what their interests are, and supporting those interests. Also, major upgrades to our main gym, you know, scoreboard facilities, our walls that are in there, a lot of things of that nature, and making it more inviting for spectators as they come in, and, and something that our entire community can be proud of when they, when they enter that area. Contractually, we are looking to streamline a couple of things, you know, with a, a lot of the upgrades that we're now looking to make with our fitness center and our facilities, we are looking to put in a maintenance contract that'll support the upkeep of those things. The lease of our treadmills, we want to make sure that we're, you know, maintaining that. We've actually consolidated all of the copiers in my, we were, there was a couple printers and Vax machines and scanners and a bunch of things in my office area that we've now consolidated into one, so we want to make sure that it is in our, our budget moving forward. Ice hockey's a big thing, that's one of our programs. For the first year, they went, in school history, we actually won the league, and actually went to the Section 1 championship, so we're extremely proud of that. I want to continue to pro, support that program by aligning that budget line to support the members of, of that program. And also, you know, right now, we have 180 students on our track and field team, we have one head coach, so we need additional coaches in, in some areas. The football program as well, boys and girls' basketball, there's some programs that really need additional support in regards to coaching, just to get them, the, the teaching and, and the support that they need along those areas. One of the items I know that is coming up, that's, that's a part of this budget presentation, is that item to support the next grant. Part of our CSF grant, the understanding that that was a part of a multi-phase project that we were looking at. We were fortunate to learn through our Booster Club of the Twin Oaks Grant that's out there for a 501(c)(3). The Booster Club completely bought into the idea and really took the lead on, you know, how can we do this, what, what is your vision, what are, what are some things, and we outlined some, some major needs that we could easily justify supporting that in the athletic center. And I just want to give you a preview of what this could possibly look like. If we moved our fitness center, and this is just one picture, but this is a rendering that we had made up, so we're looking from our treadmills right now, so you'd actually be up on one of our treadmills, looking down at the next line of, of bikes and, and everything else, and then in the back there, you see all the platforms, we would have logos on the wall, at the right there, you would see a, a track surface actually, that students could do their core or speed training and things of that nature. It's a multifunctional space. By moving it into the ENF gym, we hope that it's more inviting to our students, we would hoped that students, as they're walking down the hallway, would, would find more interest in going into a, a space that was easily accessible, right there for them. And then just to the left of that, they would also have access to the other multipurpose studio for those types of needs as well. It would create some adjustments in regards to our indoor practice space and everything else, we do have a plan for all of those. In terms of teaching spaces, we're actually, you know, it would be some adjustments, but we're hoping to make some adjustments moving forward within our programs academically there, so this will support a lot of those initiatives as well. But I wanted to make sure that everybody had a visual idea of what the potential could look like.
So perhaps it might make sense to offer the opportunity to ask questions about the athletic budget, and then we could go into the Twin Oaks grant, is that okay with everybody?
That makes sense.
So, thank you, Jason, for your overview of your budget for next year.
Thank you. So I'll just give board members opportunity to ask Jason questions.
It's pretty straightforward.
Any questions?
I got one. So Jason, I can understand the, I can understand the equipment line, contractual line, I understand.
Your print is so nice, large, large point.
Sorry.
I guess it's on the contractual. Thank you, Jeffrey. Under contractual, we were, no, that one.
It says $400,000.
Is that the $436,000 under contractual from 1617? What was that?
The $20,000?
Yeah, we went, uh, in 2016, 2017, we were contractual, 400, almost, you know, 436,000.
$436,000, yes.
Then we went to the 600 for this year, and now we're going back to 20, I guess.
Yeah, that, that confuses me a bit, too.
What's, what were the big swings there?
Can we just look it up real quick?
I think that's just where we classify it, right?
I was going to say, that sounds like a reclassification of Stan.
Under which one, Warren?
If you look at 1617, the year-end act, we, we budgeted $600, and the year-end actual was $436,000.
$436,000.
The next year, this year was 600, and next year's 20,000, so there's some pretty big swings there.
Right, what does contractual encompass, basically? Is that what you're asking?
John, that's a reclassification, right?
Give John a second, look at him.
So in regards to contractual, what I've included in my budget includes the lease of the treadmills, the copier, we have the Positive Coaching Alliance contract that we also include, you know, also the contract for the fitness, maintenance contract to upkeep those. So I really built the project, or my budget, based on the things that I knew in terms of going through the things that we spent this year, rather than...
So I guess we went from 620, 620,000, but where, where was the 436,000?
I, I know we discussed this at the time, I'm trying to remember.
I think what we did was that at the end of the year, we set aside money for the features.
Yes, dugouts.
Dugouts.
Right.
That's what it's called.
Right.
So we added dugouts, we added a few things, and that's why the, the budget went up. It was not a budget, it was a, you know, a budget transfer.
It was a budget transfer, okay.
We did additional work, several things.
Sound system, we put the sound system throughout the entire athletic center.
But this was for, before Jason.
And, you know, we moved the money into this year to, to do the work this summer.
It's before Jason, that's okay.
It's really not the budget that he prepared, but it was after he got here.
I was, I was just trying to understand where that was coming from, so it was budgetary transfers. And then in the services line, we went up by 1,000%, 100%, right? Went from 1,800 to 1,800.
It's the trainer.
Was that athletic service? Went from 13,000 to 1,800, back to 18,000. Was that just...
That was the year, the year before, the 1,800 is actually, I think when, when the budget was submitted, it was actually the wrong number, it should have been 18,000.
Right.
Because if you look at the prior year, it was 17,000, we spent 17,000, 13,000.
Budget 17, we spent 13, so that 1,800, 1,800 is an incorrect number?
And that's for like our pool, using SUNY Purchase, because that was something that John and I quickly identified.
So what we did was that we added more, more money.
So it's really not that big a swing there?
Right.
Okay, all right, I was just, oh, the last one, tournament entry fees going up 50%?
Is that Section 1?
No, no, again, that goes back to a lot of the things that, in the past, we found, we were doing a lot of transfers into that, so we want to make sure that we're not transferring around, so we want to make sure, so again... So we want to make sure, so again, as we're building this, we, we looked at, what are our actual expenditures? We don't want to keep doing all these budget transfers, and that's based on, you know, the track meets that we're going to, the wrestling tournaments, all of that.
We actually did well, so we...
Going a little bit more, yeah.
Okay. And we were reclassified next year?
So next year, our numbers, based on our numbers and the state's realignment of their numbers, we will be going down to Conference Two. There was a big discussion about this over the last couple of months, and, you know, I was reaching out to a lot of people in terms of what they felt was appropriate for us. Couple of the options were, because I've already completed the fall schedules for next year, there was consideration for us staying in Conference One for the fall season, but then competing at the Conference Two level or the Class A level for sectionals. That was not something anybody was in favor of in Conference Two, and I really wasn't in favor of our teams competing at the Double A level if we're really an A school. So we made the final decision to move all of our teams down where we are classified, down in Conference Two at the Class A level. So football schedules just came out today, and now I'm working on redoing all of our fall schedules.
We're not really moving down, we're just, we're moving to a more appropriate size.
Right, it's a size. I mean, some of the teams that we won't, you know, poor Chester, Austin, you know, some of the schools that are only 100 students more than us are still staying up in Double A.
Did they change the cutoff number because our enrollment hasn't shifted?
They did.
So they must have bumped up the number.
Yes, I mean, so basically, we've gone from one of the smallest Double A schools to now one of the larger A schools.
They just changed the cutoff, and how many schools did it affect besides us and Yorktown, perhaps?
Us, Yorktown, Clarkstown North, and Clarkstown South.
Oh, so four.
And there was a couple other schools that were in Conference Two that are now going down to Conference Three, but I'm not exactly sure where they were.
Did anyone bump up?
No.
No.
And does it rebalance? What was the, what was the end game?
Just trying to find equity between the schools. You know, there's, especially in the Double A, you know, there's such a discrepancy from a school hour size compared to a school newer shell size, Harlington size, right?
Okay.
Yeah.
So you don't view this as a disadvantage for our students?
Not at all. I think it's, it's appropriate. You know, I, I think, actually, I think it's a good advantage for some of our teams.
So you're comfortable.
Although it's a more competitive classification for certain sports.
From, yeah, for some sports, absolutely. I think the competitiveness in, in certain sports is going to be, you know, a little bit harder. You know, I was actually just meeting with our boys soccer coach this afternoon, and, you know, there's going to be, there's going to be some good competition, you know, across the board, but we're excited.
Just a quick question, we, at least I had been contacted, have we done anything with, like, a concussion protocol throughout the athletic program?
We have, and actually, John just sent me a, an invitation to this conference that I passed along to our trainers and our nurses about return to play and return to learn. There's a conference on that, so, yeah, we, we've been doing a lot with that. You know, there's a lot of...
Do we do baseline testing of all our athletes?
We do all the baseline testing and everything else. But in regards to just staying up to date on it, you know, we took, we experimented a little bit with concussion spotters in the fall. That was something that, you know, was presented to us, you know, that idea, which was interesting, you know, and I think there was some value to it. So, you know, we're always looking at, you know, what's going on, what trends we can follow, and, you know, what's beneficial for our students.
Their training is actually sponsored by NYSR.
Makes sense. Also, you, you mentioned your Twitter account, but you didn't give the plug of what your Twitter handle is. You want to do that for everyone?
Yes, so @reallysports. Definitely follow us. We, we do our best to, but @quakersports is our booster clubs, and that was something that we had debated, whether we were going to merge in the beginning, you know, this summer, when we were really talking about this initiative. And I decided I wanted to keep them separate because I wanted to make sure that mine was exactly how I wanted it. But the booster clubs, @quakersports, they do a great job because the captains' parents are really taking the lead, and I don't think there's an event that we hold that isn't covered on social media, so it's fun, and the kids are getting a lot out of it, too.
So I'd like to turn everyone's attention to 5.17. And in your backup documents, you have the letters between Sports Boosters and Twin Oaks Swimming Tennis Club, Inc., and then you have the draft letter from the district to Twin Oaks Board for consideration for a proposed grant for our spaces, our facility over in the, in the gym area. And I guess what I would first like to do is thank Sports Boosters for taking advantage of this opportunity to perhaps totally transform our gym area, and for Jason to work with them to, to hopefully secure funding for us, to really provide some different instructional opportunities during the school day, as well as some added activities for our kids after school. So what I'd like to share about this is that I think it would be important that we consider moving forward with this grant, but I want you also to know that in the end, you would approve whatever the outcome is through this process. So I, I, we would be partners in designing what that space would look like if we were to secure the, the funding through Sports Boosters, and, but ultimately, the, the school board would have the final say in whether we accepted the grant and the proposed direction that the team who worked on the grant collectively suggested and how we would redesign our facilities. I, I, I'd like at this time, if there are questions for Jason, to be able to field them from you, because it's important that, because this has been on the agenda, we've had to move it because of snow, that if we're going to authorize discussion as to whether or not it's a match for us, that we do that early April, and they've already reached out to us to start the process.
Yeah, so can you explain, and I think you just, you mentioned it very briefly, but why is this structured in this way? Why is the grant money not coming to our district? Is it a 501(c)(3) issue?
It is a 501(c)(3), so it would have to be transferred to another 501(c)(3) program, so it would be transferred to the booster club that would then turn it over to us.
So these are just restrictions on the Twin Oaks organization?
Right. Correct.
Okay. All right, and I guess my other question is, the letter is very prescriptive in, in detailing exactly what the board has to approve in the future.
Right.
And so that, I mean, I'm, I'm in favor of this transaction as a concept, but we're very restricted in what will happen, and, and the letter makes representat, well, we make representations in the letter that I'm not sure we're really prepared to make. I'm not sure that these representations are true and accurate at this time. So we can read the letter, and I don't know if everyone's had a chance to read, but maybe we should, and then I can, we can ask you questions.
Sure.
If that, if that makes sense.
And I also would like to add that this letter was vetted by our school attorney prior to placing it in here, so just for your edification.
While, while we're reading, can I ask Jason a quick question? I'm trying to understand the redesign, and I think a lot of it is the main gym, if I'm not mistaken.
So it's a whole athletic con...
We're going to take the wrestling gym and make that a fitness center. We're going to take the fitness center and make that a studio. And what are we doing with the main gym?
So the main gym, some of the major upgrades that would happen there is new basketball hoops, you know, we would take down the old existing ones that are there that some aren't even...
Some of the softest brands in America.
Actual hoops. We would take out the wooden doors, put in curtains.
So where would, when, do varsity girls play basketball?
Yes.
Would that be in the same place where they're playing now?
Yes.
Or would it be shifted over?
No, so we, we had talked about those options, and, you know, we were exploring a lot of different, that would stay the same. One of the other pieces in this grant is actually a new scoreboard system, which would be great, it's definitely needed, a welcoming center as soon as you walked in, having a display board there.
But during practice time, wrestlers would be by the outside door, well...
We would move wrestling over to the D-Gym.
The D-Gym?
D-Gym, yes. The far-right gym. With the new hoops and everything else, we'd be able to actually take advantage of the main gym for two teams, rather than just one as it's currently used. So we'd, and by having the curtains, we could actually just close them.
The two teams in practice, not on the main court, but on the separate...
Well, they could have three-quarters of the court, or they could just open up the curtain real quick, and then they'd have that time.
And the curtain would be for what purpose?
So the curtain, rather than the dividing doors that are currently there, that take, you know, upwards of 10 minutes to actually close or open, and you have to move everybody out, the curtains, you can just slide over. You know, it gives you the same dividing barrier, everything else, and gives you that opportunity to split the space up into multiple spaces. Same for FSZET as well. You know, they could start all of their instruction together, but then they could easily divide, you know, if they're breaking it out into different spaces.
Thanks.
Okay. So this letter is saying that, this letter acknowledges that the superintendent and the board have taken the following steps. So one is considered and approved in advance the offer and the manner in which the gift shall be given, which we, we are doing right now, so that's true. And a subsequent board vote to formally accept the monetary gift will be taken at the time of the donation. So, okay, that's true. Then that we've considered and approved that the, the gift will be earmarked solely and specifically to fund this project. Yes, that's true. Okay, considered and approved a mid-June 2018 start time of the project. So we're not sure, you know, you know, whenever these projects are, are implemented, we can never be 100% sure of the date, so...
Right, we're not 100% sure, but we just want to acknowledge that if we have the opportunity to do that, and it aligns with everything else within the district, that we're committed to doing that.
Right, so my, my question is, why is this in here? Because this makes the terms of the letter very inflexible, and we're making representations as to what is listed here in the letter. So I'm wondering why this has to be here at all. We're representing that we will have a mid-June 2018 date, and then we're, that we have considered and approved in advance any fiscal or administrative impact of this gift and what it may have on our current or future operations. So that, in my mind, is not a true statement. We haven't really considered the fiscal or administrative impact at the, at the time that I would, you know, we would be signing, and I would be signing the letter, so I'm not prepared to say that. But I'm, I'm wondering if these clauses are necessary in order to accept the gift. And also, what if we were to decide that, you know, something doesn't work out with the layout as it's been presented to us here? What's our flexibility?
So there's a lot of, that's just a rendering. That's not an exact rendering in terms of what we're looking to do. You know, this is actually based on the rendering of the CSF grant with some of the things that we currently have, and with the equipment that we were hopeful in getting with the money that we proposed in that grant. So there would be additional things that we'd be able to get as it's a multi-purpose project, or a multi-year project. So it would expand what we're able to do. I think in terms of our fiscal responsibility, it's just understanding that, you know, we're taking on new equipment. Over, you know, 15 years, when things start to go down, we understand that, you know, those are things that are going to have to be replaced. So I think anytime we accept things, you know, there's a fiscal responsibility among the issues.
Well, yeah, you're correct. I, I think every time we accept a gift, that we, we understand that. My problem is that the language doesn't necessarily imply that. This is very broad language, and it's unclear.
Internally, we did talk about the financial responsibility as well as the operations.
Who did?
Administration.
Okay, but that's not us, and I would be signing this letter.
So I would suggest, let me just, this is a draft letter from us, this is not a part of the resolution, so Vicki, we can work offline on changing the language so we feel comfortable signing it.
Right, I'm just not sure why it has to be so specific and be making representations that are really unnecessary.
This is related to Twin Oaks, yes. So Twin Oaks has to require certain things, I think, to grant this, correct?
Hold on, I think there are two portions of this letter that are important to them. One is that if we get the money, we actually do something with it in, in a, in a, in a timely fashion. And the second is, if there are expenses incurred because of our upgrades, we don't ask them for more money.
Right. Well, we could ask, they could say no.
But we, so, I think what we just, so, what I think we have to do, if the language in these two bullets we're not, you're not comfortable with as written, we just need to change them so they address those two requirements with the grant. And we're not wedded to this exact language, this is just a draft.
And this, this is in a request of Twin Oaks. This is actually a part of our grant proposal for them, just to show, we're trying to show complete transparency in regards to, all of our stakeholders are on board with this. You know, I've discussed this with the facilities committee, I've discussed this with the wellness committee, you know, so this is just an attempt to show complete support within our district for this proposal that we're putting forth to get this grant.
John, do we need any SED approval for any more of the data?
I was just thinking about that. I'm not sure, because we're not changing the structure, we're just putting equipment in.
Right. Yeah, Joe and I had that conversation. There's nothing really that requires any SED approval, because we're not building or, you know, building anything, really.
All right. But John is saying he's not sure. But I, I just don't want, first of all, I don't want to be limited.
I don't think so, because, you know, just looking at this, we're really just putting equipment into an existing space.
Okay, but is it necessary for us to make these specific representations?
No, we're going to look at it.
I, I think we, I think it's, I think it's, I think we as a district need to articulate to Twin Oaks that this is not something that's going to get bogged down in process, that we're going to take the money and we're going to use it and do something with it in a timely fashion, and then if there are any costs, additional costs incurred, that we will embed that into our budget. So we can work offline on changing these two bullet points so that we all feel comfortable signing the letter. But conceptually tonight, what we're asking is for us to be able to move forward, which we need to do by resolution.
But the resolution says, the resolution says to sign the letter, so...
But, but it's a, it's, it's a draft letter. The resolution itself doesn't articulate that the letter as written is the letter that, that needs to be sent.
Says to sign the enabling letter as presented to the board at this meeting, so I read that...
It's very specific.
I read that as saying, we're, we're asking Vicki to sign this letter.
I don't know about the Red Hauris, I support this.
I think we're saying that we resolve, we resolve to sign a letter, and I think that it's easily, we can certainly amend those last two bullet points to say an anticipated start date. I think we want to tell them in terms of granting us these funds, that we anticipate to move ahead with this, that we approve an, you know, anticipated start date, and that we are bearing full responsibility for, you know, costs down the road associated with this grant, and will not be going back to them. That was my understanding for any additional funds.
No, 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 no. This item, 5.17, basically says that you are authorizing the board president to sign the enabling letter as presented to the board at this meeting.
That's what I'm saying.
So maybe we should change that to an enabling to, and that we're authorizing you to sign an approved letter.
What letter?
Maybe we can, maybe we can...
Want to be an expression.
Right.
A letter approved by our...
A letter, not the existing one, a letter. Yes, we, I think we can modify that to make sure that...
Right, but will that meet, will that meet...
I guess here's a question, is there a time?
Yeah.
Is there a time limit this has to be done by?
I think it's, it's important to do it as soon as possible. I think, you know, we want to, we're hoping to have this done today so that we can move forward.
I mean, we are, I think we're all in favor of, of this in concept, you know, we have no problem with it, it's just that unfortunately...
Is it possible we go with what Christine was suggesting, that we agree to the concept and we'll work on a letter? The, the reason is because I don't think we're the only party that is going after this.
I think that's, that's what we're going to do. Yeah, that's what we're going to do, but I, but I don't think that we're prepared to vote on this item.
So which means...
But we are prepared for you to work on the letter and to approve the letter.
No, I guess what I'm trying, I guess what John's trying to say, and John, and Jason's trying to say, and now, maybe I'll say it in a different way, if we don't move forward as quickly as possible, we might lose our opportunity to leverage the grant. So is there a way to change the resolution away that gives us the latitude to work on the letter outside the meeting, but submit the letter on behalf of the district through the resolution if we have to?
That's what I, that's what I think we should do.
So, why would, why would we not be able to exercise the grant? Are they going to take the money back if we don't sign the letter tonight?
I think other people are vying for the money. Other people are vying for the funding, so the sooner we get our application in.
We need our package out to them quickly, so I think, I propose that we amend, you know, the resolution to say that we propose drafting a letter that isn't agreed upon by the board, but approve a letter to be amended.
I second that.
Authorizes the board president to sign a letter enabling the district, enabling the sports boosters to apply for the grant on behalf of the district?
Yes.
Supporting, supporting the application. The boosters are entitled to do that, we don't need a let, we don't need to.
Authorizing the board president to sign a letter.
What we have to say.
Let's hook up on the letter that isn't going to be the letter, let's rewrite the resolution in a way that may be a little comfortable.
We have to agree that we're going to use the funds to, to develop, you know, a new fitness center.
What would you say, we're going to, we'll sign a letter that we find more appropriate?
We support the application, the grant application, or something.
We support the grant application, and we'll.
They have resolved.
Rewrite a letter.
All right, hold on a second, let me just think for a second. hereby authorizes the board president to sign a letter in support of.
I just want to say this is very exciting, you know, having.
But I agree with you, Vicki, I don't know if the guy was going to sign that letter the way it is either.
But these public-private partnerships, school foundation, this, this is all great ways for our community to invest in our schools and our facilities.
The Horse Quilly High School Fitness Project.
In support of the project.
In support of the project.
Yeah, that's good.
hereby authorizes the board president to sign a letter in support of the project.
In support of the Horse Quilly High School Fitness and Athletic Center Project.
There we go.
That's it.
Yep. Okay.
Somebody move to amend this resolution, then I can second.
We haven't moved that one since at all.
Jeffrey, you want to do the honors?
I'll move that we amended as just read.
I'll read it again.
Yeah, okay.
So, okay, so I will second that we move the resolution to state, be resolved at the board, having reviewed the requisites set forth in a draft letter dated March 1, et cetera, to enable the sports boosters to receive a Twin Oaks grant to fund the Horse Quilly High School Fitness and Athletic Center Project, and hereby authorizes the board president to sign the enabling letter as presented, no, to sign a letter in support of the Horse Quilly, I'm sorry, in support of the Horse Quilly High School Fitness and Athletic Center Project.
Got that, Lisa?
Do we have to read that letter at a later date?
No, it says to sign a letter in support of the project, and we will work on the letter.
We're authorizing you to sign a letter, a letter that supports it, and we can determine what the content of that letter is after.
But how do we determine what the content, we're saying, go sign the letter.
Well, we, so when do you need the letter?
I think you and I will work on it offline, and then we'll submit the letter with the application, so we probably should work on it.
Can the letter be submitted after the spring break?
I think they're trying to move it ahead as quick as possible, so I think if we're just talking two bullet points, we could, I think we pretty much have an understanding of how they need to be written, so we can work on it.
I think we should do it before break.
So do I have board authority to work on this letter with Christine, or in my absence, the board vice president, or in his absence, Allison?
Yes.
Going down the line, okay.
Yes, yes.
With maybe legal counsel?
Yes, yes. To be proven by legal counsel, yes, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
You've moved.
I think we have a second.
So we have a second, so all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Jason. Appreciate your presentation tonight, and we're really excited that this could be a potential opportunity for the district. Thank you to sports boosters too, for taking the initiative to improve our facilities in this way, tremendous. Joe Grumondo, you are up, and I just, so I'd like to thank Joe for presenting tonight. Now, this would be his second presentation to the community this year, since he had already done a facilities update, so this may be a truncated version of what he normally would share, since he already had the opportunity to present to the board earlier this winter.
Okay. Hi, good evening.
Good, Joe.
And yes, I already did a condition report, and also in March's issue of highlights, there's a capital update, so I'm not talking about anything but my proposed budget, so it'll be quick.
Any jokes?
Promise to be.
Yeah, no jokes.
How can that be?
It might be funny.
I wasn't going to do any jokes tonight, this is going to be more of a John Chau presentation.
There you go.
We appreciate that.
Sorry. All right, so I have two informational slides. So the Building and Grounds Department, our mission is to maintain a healthy and safe environment for the staff and students, to provide the best level of care for the buildings and grounds. Our goals are to maintain our facilities through preventive maintenance and our five-year plans, to continue to improve on our safety and security, continue with green initiatives, and to continue to train our staff. Whoops. We have more than 900,000 square feet of buildings to maintain each day. The schools are open 15 hours a day, five days a week, and various times on the weekend. We're maintaining all of the playing fields, and we have over 675 pieces of heating and air conditioning equipment that we maintain. Our custodians and cleaners are cleaning an average of 30,000 square feet per cleaner per night. That is pretty much one of the highest in the county. And our maintenance staff are maintaining 150,000 square feet per worker. Okay, my budget. So I have three sections of a budget here, so my Building and Grounds section, I am looking at an increase of $30,000 in this section, and that's due to adding three security guards at the high school recently, so that's a $105,000 price tag on that. So if I didn't have that, I would have had a decrease of $75,000 in this, in this line.
Why did that go in your budget?
Security guards are in my, in my budget.
The personnel that, those are.
Right, the contract, the contract.
Also, Joe is responsible for the security for the, for the school district.
You got your back, Joe.
I know, he just threw me out there. Okay, so some of the decreases there, in case you want to know, it's electric, water, telephone services, you know, as we're, you know, with our lighting, you know, LED lighting, we're saving money, so, you know, that's where we cut back. In the Operations and Maintenance section of the budget, I have decreases in equipment, equipment repair, and field maintenance, field maintenance due to the turf field, but I have an increase in building repair and contractual. So in this section, it's a $25,000 increase I was looking for. In the five-year facility plan section, I was looking for a $55,000 increase there, and that's in O and M capital district-wide and blacktop repair, but in the interfund transfer, we're doing a reduction from 575 to 100,000. And that 100,000 would be used for the renovation at the Bell Cafeteria. So overall, my entire budget, I have a decrease of 5.74%. Jeff's going to laugh.
Thank you.
I see you, Jeff. And, thank you.
Awesome, Joe.
Any questions?
We appreciate the decrease.
That was so deep, Chris.
Thank you. Josh and Jason and I have it back on, who would be the quickest, though? I won. But the thing is, you had to be quick, and you had to be fully informational.
We're not finished with you yet.
Oh, okay.
Josh and Jason can, you know, ask us to go longer for a bit.
They can ask more. I just, for the communities, just for their vantage point, we had a longer presentation from Joe previously, where we asked a lot of questions about the facilities and the operation, so.
Right, in January, I gave that condition report.
That's why this is different than the other budget presentations.
Any questions for Joe?
No.
Joe, this is very straightforward. Thank you for clear presentation, thank you for finding efficiencies and cutting costs, appreciate that.
Thank you.
While doing, great job.
Thank you, Stan.
That's all we got.
The custodian could rate.
Thank you.
Next, you, I'll put pictures in.
Thank you, we appreciate it. All right, so, thanks, Joe. All right, so the next two components, or the next presentations will be led by John Chau.
Okay.
And I just want to let the community know that today is John Chau's birthday, and we are happy that he's here late celebrating his birthday with us and talking about the budget. What a great gift for you.
Very exciting.
Yes, it's your favorite thing to do.
Also, with Joe's introduction, you know, the pressure is off now, I don't have to talk about pictures, I don't have to tell jokes, I don't have to do any of those things, just very straightforward. Before I start talking about the budget, I just want to mention one thing, is that I have been here 11 years, and one thing that really, really impressed me is the support that we get from the community. And you see the generous support by CSF, and we had to remember the PTA and the Boosters Club, they are always very, very generous, and they're really lessening the pressure on the budget itself. And, you know, you can see it, because, for example, without CSF support, you know, the technology budget would have gone up, and also with, with also athletic budget would have gone up more, so, you know, we really are very thankful. And every year, especially a year, and PTA always come through with gifts for every school, and, you know, that's very appreciated. So, here, the first part of the presentation is the non-instructional budget, and also the companion pieces talk about the fund balance. So, why is the non-instructional budget as important? The reason is because this represents about 45% of our budget. So that's important, and if you go back and say, well, you know, last time you talked about the personnel piece is 75%, how come the non-instructional budget is 45? The reason is because in the non-instructional budget, we also have benefits, and they represent about 25%. So there's some overlapping, so here we go. So this is the proposed budget, I'm not going to go over that, just a reminder, and overall, it's 2.5%. I do want to mention that the two largest driving forces for this, larger than our last few years' average increase, is because, one is because of TRS, and the TRS is actually going up, and last year, because TRS went down, it decreased the budget by $1 million. And this year, because it's going up, this year, I mean, 18, 19, it's increasing the budget by half a million dollars. And meanwhile, the second driving force is the debt service that we borrowed for this first tranche, the $16 million, and that increased the budget by $1 million, and we talked about several times already, and that increase will have no impact on the tax levy. And today, for the non-instructional part, we cover general support, transportation, community services, and undistributed. And here, again, we just want to show you the 10 categories. I think the most, most part, we already talked about, operation and maintenance and technology, and athletic budget is actually included in the under the other here, so we're at the last part, is talking about, for example, the benefits that we haven't talked about. In general support, these are the categories, and Joe already talked about the Buildings and Grounds part, and we'll go over the rest. I'm not going to go line by line, I just highlight the major changes. And for Board of Ed, you have minimal changes here, so it is what it is. And central administration, there's not much change. By the way, all our budgets, they are all, you know, the categories, whether in the presentation or the entire line-by-line budget, they are all on the website, so you can look at it. And finance and auditing, pretty much in line with the prior years. And legal services, the same, you know, we didn't have much changes here. And special items, so special items are the items that, you know, for example, for the insurance, for also BOSI services, and you would see the changes here, altogether it's $34,000. And transportation, well, we, you know, this is one of the unknowns that we talked about at the last presentation on March 14th, and so, we, when we renew the contract, we have to use the CPI number that is going to be given to us June 15th, and so I'll just tell you where we are right now, the, I'm using a 2.25% increase for, for the 18, 19 budget. And the walking distance, we haven't changed, we have two distances, one is K through 8, one is 9 through 12. And when it comes to the highlights, you know, the busing numbers, the vans, this is exactly the same as the 17, 18 budget, and the only change is because of the CPI number. And community service, and this is the census that we have to keep, and this is a partial of a person that is in my office, and this is the budget. And undistributed, and these are, the categories will impact the entire district, but it's not distributed to the individual schools, and therefore it's called undistributed. So we'll go over the employee benefits, we'll go over the debt service, and we'll go over the interfund transfers. So for the employee benefits, the two big stories, and the two large category are, one is the TRS number, one, TRS is going up from 9.8% to 10.63, and therefore, there's an impact here, and it's a half a million dollar increase in the TRS number. And whereas the health insurance, we do have good news for next year, the increase is at 3.75%, rather than 8%, however, it's still representing an increase, and therefore you see an increase here. And so, overall, the employee benefits, you see an increase. And the debt service, this is the place that we took on the $16 million bond, and we came in at about 2.69%, we borrowed it last November, and for next year, the principal and interest payment is just slightly over a million dollars, and therefore you see the increase in the debt service here. And I will talk about the balance part, why it doesn't have any impact on the tax levy. Okay, here, here you see the increase because of the new debt that we borrowed, and is the, we just want to keep it here because we want to be consistent with prior years. And the interfund transfer, so this is the first piece, Joe already mentioned that interfund transfer for, for capital has decreased from 575,000 to 100,000, so this is the first piece, and because when we went for the bond, this is what we made, the commitment that we made to the taxpayers, we said that we reduced the interfund transfer by $475,000. And the interfund transfer for summer program for special education has remained the same, 165,000, and we're hoping that the governor will not touch that piece. And so, at this point, we basically have concluded all the expenditure budget presentation to this point, so from now on, we're going to talk about fund balance, we're going to talk about the revenue and tax rates, tax levies, but the expenditure side is finished. So here we are, we talked about the fund balance, and I added a couple words here, you know, this includes the reserves. So, we, we have the two-year reserves, and, you know, the fund balance, ending fund balance, one is June 30 of 2016, you know, that's the first column here, and then also we have, the second column is how we closed out last year, and then also we have the projected year-end closing fund balance. And we made some assumptions, for example, because we are going to use some of the fund balance from the unassigned, and therefore, we may not have 4% carry into next year. I think it's come to 3.6%. We're assuming that we're going to use some fund balance or reserve for compensated absences, because that's, we don't budget for that anymore, and therefore you see some. balance from the unassigned and therefore we may not have four percent carry into next year. I think it's come to three-point-six percent. We're assuming that we're going to use some fund balance or reserve for compensated absences because that's, we don't budget for that anymore and therefore you see some decrease there. And then also, we are, in the proposal, we are using a hundred thousand dollars for, from the ERS reserve, so that number is going down. So, so, so you know, the last column, the far-right column is really a projected column, these are the projected numbers, we're using our best estimate at this point. So here is the part that we're talking about in the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen proposal, we are proposing to use these fund balance. Unassigned is one-point-nine, is exactly the same as the current year. And unassigned, for the bond, we are using four-hundred-twenty thousand. And then also for, from the retirement is a hundred thousand and the tax reduction fund is a hundred thirty-five thousand. So this is the part I talked about. So last year, you see, we used two million dollars and the two lines here, one is the unassigned, one-point-nine million, and the other one is from the retirement contribution fund, these two add together is exactly two million dollars.
How much of that, how much of that did we use so far?
For this year? I don't know. I had the feeling this year, at the end of the year, we'll probably use some, but not, it's not going to be two million dollars.
Okay.
Okay.
Out of which, out of both funds or just one fund?
We'll definitely use the retirement funds because we're going to transfer that out.
Pardon me?
We're going to use this one-hundred thousand dollars.
So we'll use a hundred thousand and we'll use-
Will be used.
We'll use partial of the one-point-nine million?
That's right, that's correct. So the other two lines, one is the unassigned, I put down the word bond because we're going to use this to offset that, that bond payment that we have. And then the other amount is a hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. This is, this is the reserve fund that we just set up last year, you approved because we sold a piece of land and I think that was a hundred forty-three or a hundred forty-one-thousand, I can't remember now. So we still have some funds there and the reason we don't want to use-
The piece up at Seven Bridges?
Seven Bridges. And the reason we don't want to use it up is because we want to keep this reserve fund open because we're getting ready to, once we get approval for this other piece of property, we'll sell it and then we'll put the funds all in there, okay, for future use. So here, we're using about five-hundred-fifty-five thousand dollars, four-hundred-twenty plus a hundred thirty-five, that's the balance, plus the four-hundred-seventy-five thousand, that is the full amount that we'll, we'll use to pay for the, for the, for the bond. And therefore, there's no impact on the tax levy to the taxpayers. And so this is our proposed appropriation of fund balance and reserve for the next school year. We'll go over this again, the reason is because when we talk about the tax levy part, it's going to come up again. And again, this is the budget, proposed budget. I'm not going to skip these two, these three slides because we'll talk again at the next presentation.
Are there any questions for John? On the non-instructional budget, the fund balance? Okay.
Okay.
I guess we'll just take it as one, one whole presentation.
Okay. I can't remember, so it's okay. So we're going to talk about the revenues, the tax analysis, and contingency budget here. And we went over the slides. So we talked about the revenues. So these are the large categories that we always use and you can see altogether, is add together is a hundred percent and this is the exact amount as our expenditure, so this is a balanced budget. And this is the more detailed analysis. And you'll see the real, real property taxes is two-point-one-three percent increase. And we also, based on the governor's proposed budget, we have an increase in the state aid and we have a slight in, well, we actually have a large increase in appropriations. The reason is because we're adding five-hundred-some-thousand dollars, we talked about earlier. And these, you know, we don't have that much changes, this is the rest of the revenue sources. And the key number eventually when we come back to is the two-point-two million dollars increase here. And because that is going to be judged against tax levy. And so we'll come back to that piece and this is the comparison of the two years, the proposed budget and the current year. And this is what is the percentage represented. You know, obviously, the largest piece is the real property taxes and it's always close to ninety percent here, it's eighty-nine point something. And this is our tax cap. And we talked about this before, I just want to mention one thing is that even though our tax cap is in the three million, our proposed tax levy increase is slightly over two million dollars, this percentage, you know, we can, if we go up to the top, I just tell you, last year, about sixty percent of the school district went directly to the tax cap. Because the theory is that you don't want to leave anything on the table, but that's never our theory, that's not the way we go. And you know, if you look at this number, the tax levy increase we can go up to is three-point-five-nine percent. And our proposed tax levy increase is two-point-one-three percent. I think you have seen some of the numbers because I think every Friday, you get a report from your association and they give you the chart. I always look at that. And you will see, next time, just look at these two columns, one is the allowable, you know, the tax cap, and the other one is proposed tax levy increase. You will see so far, I think there are at least twenty school districts, they are exactly the same number. So here's the tax analysis. Well, we always start with the, the final, this is the tax warrant, this is, these are the numbers that we use to generate a tax warrant, so this is the two thousand and seventeen, eighteen tax rates. And then there are two things that we're going to talk about here, one is the equalization rates. Equalization rates is very important because ultimately, this will impact the difference between the two towns when it comes to the tax rates. And just remember, right now, for, for the equalization rates, for the town of Newcastle, there's a decrease of two-point-three-one and for, for a town of Mount Pleasant is going down close to six percent. And later on, when you see the estimated tax rates, you'll see there's a major impact here. The good news is, I think I talked about it last time, is that they're going the same direction, they're both representing a decrease, so we don't have a even further, larger discrepancy. But also, what this is also telling us is that for the town of Mount Pleasant, the market value is going up more or faster or greater than the town of Newcastle. When you see the equalization rate going down, what that is saying is that the market value is going up, is the opposite impact. And tax assessments, you know, you see the town of Newcastle is going down a little bit, zero, minus zero-point-one-eight, and the town of Mount Pleasant is going up. And the reason it's going down is because, you know, people are challenging their assessments. And I'm hoping with, with the summer greenfield coming up, I'm hoping that next year, we'll see an increase in the tax assessment for the town of Newcastle. And I just want to mention again that these are estimated numbers. This is a snapshot, on March fifteenth, we took the numbers and we're not going to get the final numbers until July because they need to finalize both numbers. So here are our estimated tax rates. Now you see, for example, for Newcastle, there's an increase of one-point-one-nine-two and for Mount Pleasant is five-point-eight-three. This is because of the equalization rate. And that, that has a major impact here. And you see that, you see the difference here. And I'm going to skip this because we have a summary sheet. So when you look at the last eight budgets, so there are several increases here, the budget, two-budget increase average is one-point-four-two percent and the tax levy is one-point-four-five. Both numbers are larger, larger than last year and the reason is because this year, our budget is going up two-point-five percent. And the tax rates, again, these are estimated numbers, these are average for seven increases eight years. And I'll go over the contingency budget. The law hasn't changed, the important thing is that the contingency budget may not include levy higher than the prior year's levy. So if we go to the contingency budget, the tax levy has to be exactly the same as last year's tax levy. And this is the flow chart. We have a budget vote on May fifteenth and if the budget is approved, it's good, so basically we have done the board, the board, the budget is adopted. And if the budget is voted down, then we have two, two routes to go. One is that, you know, the board can just go directly to the contingency budget, what that means is that we have to cut some expenses or increase some revenues to make the tax levy for eighteen, nineteen to be exactly the same as seventeen and eighteen. Or the board can come back and say, we'll have another vote. And the second vote is always the third Tuesday of, in June. And the budget can be the same budget, can be a reduced budget, or could be a higher budget. And then there will be another vote and then, you know, you have another route to, if it is approved, then we have a budget, if it is disapproved, then we have to go to the contingency budget the second time. And how much is the reduction? And so this is the piece we're coming back to because we have to make these two numbers the same, we're talking about the real property taxes because that's the rule of the contingency budget. So we had to find two-point-two million dollars. And here are some possibilities, one is to reduce expenditures and, you know, the most of the expenditures is in personnel. And of course, we can reduce non-personnel items and/or we can use more fund balance, you know, NR, so you can do both to reduce that two-point-two million. And here is the budget notice and this is a legal requirement, is always in our budget Basically is to talk about the contingency budget, so this is the column is contingency And also, the important thing is that we have a separate proposition that the board adopted. So this is the one to set up a capital reserve of ten million dollars using the unassigned excess fund at the end of each year and the limit is ten million dollars. I'm sure we will talk about it again at budget adoption time. And here, all the numbers again, our proposed budget. And this is the important thing, Lisa reminded me to remind everyone. And so, so you know, the district clerk is here, he can register anyone who is eligible to vote and her office hours, her phone number, and her email address. And the registration can be up till May tenth, it's five days prior to the election. And then if you want, if you're not going to be able to vote, you're not going to be in town. Or for illness that you cannot vote, you can send in the application for absentee ballot and issue a mail-in ballot. And I don't think we need to go over this, this page because I know this page is well-used. We have received a lot of emails, we have received a lot of phone calls, so this is it.
And I also would like to mention, so we had our budget forums where people had the opportunity to ask us questions. So since that opportunity has passed, if people want to sit down and talk to John and I about the budget, we would welcome that to provide another opportunity.
Yes. And I'll be in the office next week, so yeah, everyone's welcome. We're off this Friday and next Monday, but I'll be in office from Tuesday through Friday next week. So basically, what we have done is we have finished all the budget presentations, what's left is the budget adoption on April eleventh and the budget hearing on May second and budget vote on May fifteenth. And again, we want to thank PTA for organizing two great forum events and I have to say that both were well-attended.
Very energetic.
Very energetic. And we really welcome everyone, you know, being there and we really appreciate people's enthusiasm, so that's it.
John, the, in the use of fund balance, we're using a hundred thousand dollars from the retirement contributions fund?
Yes.
How much is the actual budget line for that?
Budget line?
Yeah, and we're using a hundred thousand dollars to pay down part of an expense. How much is the actual expense? How much is the next year, in the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen budget, retirement?
Oh, okay, I have it.
The budget is now just four million, four-hundred-sixty-five thousand, that is fifty-two. For next year, four thousand, four hundred and twenty-four.
Thank you.
One million.
I'll wait for John's official-
So the budget, the budget amounts, one million, four-hundred-twenty-four thousand, four-hundred-thirty-six dollars.
Okay, and the total balance in that, in the retirement contribution fund is how much, three million?
It's in there somewhere.
Why don't we use more from that one? Why aren't we using more from that fund balance?
Why don't we use more?
Yeah, I mean, at the rate we're using it, it'll take us a long time.
I don't think the purpose is to use it up, I think the purpose is that when, for example, when the market is, when the market tank, that's the time you really use it, right? That's the, that is the purpose of that reserve. It's not say, you know, let's use it up.
Well, if you use more of that and you use less of the other ones, then you just transfer it, I guess.
What I'm worrying about is that, I'm worried, I really worry about the market because I have seen, you know, we saw some very large increases and that really had an impact on the budget. And I think this is the reason that we are using less, we are, not less, we're using exactly the same amount rather than using a larger chunk.
Have we ever used more than a hundred thousand dollars?
I don't remember.
No.
I don't think so, but I can't.
So you're worried about the market, what's-
Right, for example, right now, you know, the market is fluctuating.
I know.
Yes.
So my question to you is, what's your crystal ball say regarding New York State? I'm worried about New York State, forget the market, markets will go up and down. What is, what is the New York State budget and what is the governor going to do to us? What do you think about that? Are you worried about that or are we, should we all be-
Well, right now, you know, I'm not worried about next year's state aid because right now, we already have the governor's budget. And the governor's budget is reflected in our budget.
Okay.
So I think in the future, I am worried. The reason is because, you know, the federal income tax has impact on the state budget, on our individual's budget, but, but if you're just talking about eighteen, nineteen's budget, I'm not worried about the state aid, I think that's pretty solid.
What about the fact, I think, didn't they say that the one that reduced our, the money they paid us back for special ed?
Special ed, I think right now, you know, four, the four of them are negotiating, the governor and speaker as well as John Flanagan. And I think, right now, for, you know, the senate and the assembly both have given out their budget and both of these budget didn't include a special, special ed change. So I'm hoping that they can convince the governor not to change that.
I guess that's, that's my question, what do you, what's our exposure there?
Four-hundred-thirty-five thousand.
Okay. John, you said-
A maximum amount, you know, if we go directly-
Based on the historic repayment, what is that?
Well, yeah, but Allison, you know, this is, this is your- Allison, you know, this is, this is your, my.
It was a lot of categories. You know, it was BOSI's, transportation.
So our exposure is about $435,000.
Just with a special, special aid fund.
Okay. So if we had to, we could use fund balance to cover that or whatever.
If we have to.
That was my point. I think you mentioned earlier that we might not go all the way up to the 4% at the end of this year. But by using more retirement contributions fund money, what we're doing is adding flexibility to us to be able to have, make decisions in case a, you know, the summer budget gets countered, in case that $175,000 comes into play. It seems to me that from a prudent financial standpoint, we should always, assuming we have the money, we should always be at 4%. And this seems like a really great place to get that money, to get us back to 4%.
I don't, you know, right now, because we still have three months to go, I'm really not sure exactly how we're going to end. So I'm okay right now with this.
I guess we're at a new pace.
No, 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 because I'm really worried that, you know, if the market goes down and the ERS and TRS contribution rate goes up, and then we will.
It's a 5%, it's a 5-year average, right?
Yes, 5-year.
If, if for some reason, we have to use a material amount of retirement contribution, and we have to pay a larger number in that budget line, is the only place we can take it from?
No, no, because it's really all going into the one pot. It's all going to revenue.
Money's fungible.
Because it doesn't have to be matched. So it really doesn't matter where we take it.
Right. That's why it seems to me that we should be as flexible as possible as opposed to locking it into one very specific purpose.
You know, we will probably get more foundation aid at the end of the day. I think we will.
We may not get some other school districts, that the more needy school district will probably get more. But coming to, that's my theory, I'm not sure. But coming to Jeff's question, I think the less money used for the retirement reserve fund actually gives us more flexibility. The reason is because.
I'm not following.
Because when you use the reserve funds, all requires four resolutions. Whereas if you use undersigned, you don't have to because we are allowed to use up to 2 million, 1.9 million, because that's what we are allowed to transfer, right? That's why you have more flexibility.
Wait, say that again?
Let me see. I think it's the other presentation. It's in the other presentation. Right now, if we use, you see, if we have to use the reserve for retirement, we have to come to you or we need to allocate funds into it. But whereas if we use, that's the question that Warren asked me, how much have we used that 1.9? That's the flexibility because we can use up to 1.9 million every year.
We can use up to 4% of it, right?
No, because if, no, if we're going to use more than the 1.9 that is appropriated, we have to come to the board to ask for money.
Right.
And that undersigned is more flexible.
Right. Right. I'm trying to increase the undersigned balance going forward.
But we don't know, I'm just projecting that we'll end with 3.6. We don't know how we're going to end right now. Because right now, we're still, we still have three months to go.
I respectfully disagree with you, Chris.
Okay.
It's his birthday, give him a break. Sorry, I haven't seen him.
I hear you, definitely.
We have, I guess we have disagreement on, you know, on our revenues coming in.
Okay.
I think we can, we can discuss this more and think about this and look at it.
Any other questions from the board?
We've done, yeah, we've done revenue adjustments prior to the budget in previous years where we've adjusted any fund balance.
We've always said we can do it in August, but I don't recall actually changing in August.
No, but we've made some changes later in April before the budget vote.
Oh, yeah.
Where we.
In terms of which fund?
Where the money is coming from, so we can think about that and.
Right. We'll know more at that point.
So, okay.
Okay. Allison, anything? Okay.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Ready to move on?
Oh, sorry. No, that's it.
All right. So I'd like to introduce Eric Hyer from KDNG Architects and thank you for waiting, Eric. So I just want to remind the board and the community that our last meeting, we discussed the possibility of redesigning our entrance ways at all six buildings. At our high school, we talked about potentially having a single point entrance model. And then at our elementary, middle schools, we looked at potential designs for man traps at all five entrance points. So the idea of moving forward and examining this as a possibility and then analyzing a possible budget to support this reconstruction, you authorized KDNG to do this work and they were to come back and report to the board this evening. Also, we had run the potential of redesigning our entrance ways between two of our committees, our facilities committee and our health and safety committee both endorsed this. And you also authorized me to begin to have discussions with the larger community about these ideas, which I did at the, at the budget presentations and which some of our board members were able to attend. And just in summary, I felt that of the parents who were there, all of course supported school safety, but a lot, there were some comments regarding, you know, what are some different options for the high school? And will there be more time to process this, to get more feedback, to get the information out to the larger community, to do more outreach? So in the meantime, because of that feedback, we decided it wouldn't be prudent to put this on the May vote. But we talk about as a board, if it makes sense, as we go through the process here, to look to June if that might be something we may want to consider since if we went past June, it would push out construction to the following July in 2020 versus July 2019. So some of the other things that we've, we talked about, which are in the process of doing, other than, you know, putting together some kind of information for the community as a, at large is to see if we could secure some outside funding to maybe support some of the components of this project. So I have been working on that as well. I just, at this point, I don't think it's appropriate to talk about that publicly. So now, I'd like to just invite Eric. Well, thank you.
Thanks for having me. And it's still not David Letterman time, so it's still early in the evening. Just a 15-second update on capital projects that are ongoing right now, that this week, the Horace Greeley projects are going out to bid. And those, that bidding process is over the course of the next five weeks and the bids will be due May 2nd. Those projects include the L building renovations, the STEAM center, the library renovation as well as K110.
What about the field?
And Field C.
Field C, the turf, the second turf field.
Yes. So didn't exactly go to architecture school to talk, to study and design security projects, but here we are. And we were asked to look at the six different campuses and make suggestions or recommendations as to what could or should be done on each of these campuses. John, can you go to the next?
You want to?
For some reason, this presentation is a little bit strange, but first, talking about the three elementary schools and the two middle school projects, when you're looking at security projects, so Security 101 is looking at the perimeter of buildings and making sure the exterior perimeter around the buildings is secure. Obviously, all school buildings have many exits, many exterior doors for fire reasons, et cetera. But in general, you want to have one point of entry so that at all times, those other doors are locked. And even your main entrance door should have a control so that there isn't free access into the building. Typically, that consists of a vestibule where visitors can come in, access the vestibule freely, and then before they can proceed forward into the building itself, that there's another set of doors that stops them. And often, there's a security desk or office, possibly a transaction window, which provides that visitor with the opportunity to show their ID, to be checked out, and assuming that everything's fine, that they would then be permitted access into the building. So that's really what we looked at primarily in terms of the three elementary schools. At this set of drawings that's up on the screen right now is Roaring Brook. And Roaring Brook today has a vestibule. It's not a secure vestibule in the fact that the second set of doors does, typically is left unlocked because the actual desk itself, and in most cases throughout the district, the actual reception desk or security desk is in the lobby space, which would be beyond that man-trapped, person-trapped vestibule. So in all three elementary school cases, we looked at how to accomplish creating a vestibule that was secured and having a security desk or office with a transaction window. At Roaring Brook, there's an office immediately adjacent to the left of that vestibule, which currently is the gym teacher's office. It's relatively large and is able to be renovated and subdivided so that it could be both used by the gym teacher as well as having a security station and transaction window. And the second set of doors then could be locked and then have a button to access through the building so that no longer with that desk, which I think you could probably see in that middle picture there, which is currently in the lobby space, would then be able to be removed.
I'll go to the middle school.
Grafflin? Yeah, just go quickly.
Okay.
So Grafflin today does not have a vestibule. You go in through the main set of doors, immediately into the lobby space, and there's a security desk right there. The proposal here is to add a vestibule to the outside as well as a canopy, so there's a certain amount of protection, both from the elements as well as control getting access into the building and as well as the vestibule creating a small security office and desk there with a transaction window. So at West Orchard, you have actually a very good setup today where you have a vestibule. The second set of doors can be locked and immediately adjacent and to the left of that entrance vestibule is the main office. So if we cut a window and transaction window to that office, we can serve that security function right there. Bell, a couple of years ago, you added a security desk into the auditorium lobby. It works pretty well today. The only recommendation here would be the second set of doors, which accesses the rest of the building, would be, have a locking mechanism as well as protect, some protection film on the, on that glass. Seven Bridges has a vestibule today, but like the other elementary schools, the actual check-in desk is in the lobby space. The proposal here is actually to create a small security office just to the left of the vestibule with a transaction window and check-in and then man that second set of doors.
I just want to add one thing. Eric actually designed Seven Bridges.
I don't know why I wasn't designed with a security desk. So that leads us to the high school. Be able to slide that up? So the high school is slightly different and you actually have been making some adjustments to security around the high school, around the outer perimeter. Today, you have free access to the front courtyard, obviously underneath the entrance canopy. But around the perimeter to, as you go around to G, K building, around to L building, for example, the back courtyard has two accessible entrances, both of which have been over the course of the last year closed off. One is temporarily closed until the STEAM center is put in. That's between G and K. And that will close off that portion of the courtyard. And the other is underneath the bridge that goes from K to L. You added a gate, a fence and a gate there, so that closes off access to that courtyard. We've also, in collaboration with, you have a security consultant, looked at the high school in terms of the front entrance. Today, you have four entrances. You have an entrance to the gymnasium, one to the auditorium, one to the main office and to the building, and then an entrance over by the cafeteria in the library. So you have four main points, which if you're a student going from one end to the building to another, you actually have to exit out from the secure portion of the building and then re-enter into another area to go to whatever activity you're going to in a different part of the building. Both our office and our, and your security consultant came to a similar conclusion that the recommendation here to close off this building would be to create two corridors, one corridor that connected between the gym and the auditorium, and the other corridor which connected between the auditorium main entrance and library media center so that there could be internal connection to all aspects of the building and any student that's going to any sort of function that was in, within any portion of the Greeley set of, series of buildings would be able to do so through an internal corridor system. This would create one main entrance over the course of the day. Obviously, during dismissal and arrival, there'll be multiple doors for access to get in in any one of these areas where it's shown as blue on the screen here.
Can you go through that again? I'm sorry, Eric. What do you mean by the only multiple doors open at that entrance?
Well, first thing in the morning, you'd have the opportunity, if you so choose, to have more than one entrance door. For egress purposes, there would be multiple doors along either of those colored in blue corridors. You'd have the possibility to unlock more, to allow students free entrance.
Because that was one of my questions, you have a single queue funnel bottleneck of 1,000 kids trying into one door, right?
Right. I mean, this is generally set up so that once school is in session, kids are in class until the end of school day, when students are leaving to hop on the bus or hopping through their cars, that you have one point of entrance. And that in this diagram here, that one point of entrance is halfway between the main office and the library. Today, as you drive up there, there's an open courtyard that's covered with, there's a canopy that leaves between the two. If you can envision having a pavilion right there that offered, you want me to do it here? Right here. Have a pavilion right here that offered a security desk and a couple sets of doors right there and a vestibule, which like the other campuses, would allow you to gain access so that you're undercover, but at the same time be signed in. As you know, today, you have one security guard bill that hangs out right inside the main, main office there, but access into the, into the library and cafeteria zone, there's a security guard that's over there, but there isn't a check-in station. So if for some reason, visitor doesn't know where the main entrance is, they could potentially just sort of walk into the cafeteria or similar into the gymnasium or auditorium.
Can I just add one thing?
Go ahead.
So right now, I just want to clarify one thing. Right now, we have our main checking, just one point is right here, but we also have a security guard here, and we have a security guard here at the gym, and then we have a security guard. Because right now, this blueprint. Because right now, this blue point is open, this is going directly to our courtyard, so we have a security guard here. But we only have one checking point is here. So we have visitors, and the security guards at these three points will stop them, and they will be directed to go to the main entrance to get the visitors passed. At this point, we do have four security guards.
So that's generally the concept. There's a grade change between the gym and the auditorium, which is up about nine feet. So any corridor that was connecting the two would have to have a combination of step stairs as well as a lift to get people from the gym elevation up to the auditorium. Otherwise, at where John mentioned, at these four points, to the gymnasium, to the cafeteria, to the main entrance, and to the auditorium. At any one of these points, we would continue to maintain doors. So depending on the program and the amount of access that you wanted to the building, people could come in, use the front door here, and maybe only have access to the cafeteria and the media center. And the other doors to the rest of the building could be in a locked position. Same thing with the auditorium, same thing with the gymnasium, so that there's the ability to control access to different parts of the building over the course of the day, evening, or weekend. So.
That provides, I would say, more of a greater level of flexibility.
That's right. You have other doors throughout the building which close off corridor wings, et cetera. All this should be looked at as sort of one sort of conglomerate security project to ensure that you can use the building as you want to use it and close off the building as you'd like to be closed off. One tricky thing about your campus is actually because you have these two large courtyards, and over the course of years, the buildings have been connected, and the original buildings were egress into those courtyards, which were open and now obviously flow directly to the outside. Once you start to close this in, we have to work closely with the state ed department and our own analysis of egress to ensure that ultimately we have the appropriate egress from all the different buildings. And so that's, there's actually money in here to look at door swings and access because as things change in terms of exit patterns, we may have to address other areas in the building. So there's just a couple of slides here that show that security projects don't necessarily have to be unattractive or just functional. The top two projects is Somers High School, where it was a project to create a new main entrance, a secure zone, so there was one point of entry there. The bottom left was White Plains High School, actually done 20 years ago now, dating myself, where they had 34 main entrances, and at the end of that project, they had one. And then the bottom right is Armstrong Bosse's, which was a hospital converted to a Bosse Center, and new entrance canopy that allowed light to be transmitted down and through, but also offered protection from the elements.
Eric, these are your projects?
These are our projects.
Okay, yeah.
And not to dwell, these are just a couple of projects at John J. Middle School here. Again, connecting two different areas of the middle school to provide better circulation. And the bottom one is Ripwam Siskel and Bedford Private School. But it shows that courtyards can be active spaces and should be considered as educational areas as well, and be able to be looked into. And then, you know, one of the beautiful things about where we live is that we enjoy four seasons, and so being able to look into the courtyards and...
I wouldn't say we enjoy them.
You might not enjoy all of them at all times. And this is the kind of time of year where you're not necessarily enjoying winter anymore, looking forward to spring, but when spring comes, we all enjoy spring too.
Spring is here.
Next. There's other ways to look at security on campuses, and if you're not looking at securing at the building itself, are you looking at securing around the perimeter of the campus? And so this drawing just shows that you have 8,320 linear feet of potential campus that would need to be fenced in or could be fenced in. And currently, you have two entrance gates. You have the main entrance that we use 95% of the time, which we could add a gatehouse and have a check-in before you get out of your car and have your ID checked at that point. There's also, and that's that point right there, the ed house is right beyond that. We're showing this not all the way up to the edge of Roaring Brook Road because there's the expectation that there's a certain amount of queuing that you're going to have on campus and not confuse what's currently going on up at Roaring Brook Road today. So that would be what that is. It can be a gatehouse. There's other options, but that's typically what's considered in this sort of situation. And then down by the facilities office, there's also a gate down here, which would be, again, you currently have a gate, and it would just be maintained or upgraded accordingly. And in this case, this fence would be most likely an eight-foot-tall, heavy gauge, chain-linked fence with a rubber membrane on it.
But that could be covered with foliage. You know, I mean, those fences don't have to be standalone, bushes and...
You can decorate them. We can put landscape around them. You have wooded areas. Some of your property is fenced in today.
We could go look at some of the designs in California for Mr. Troy.
Yes. We could do that, too. I think those fences are a little bit more expensive than the ones that are being proposed here. So the elementary schools and middle school projects combined with what we described this evening is just under $1 million for those five projects. And then the Horace Greeley project, if we're looking at, it's about 8,000 square feet of additional space for those two interior connections, that that project is about $7.4 million combined with the elementary and middle school projects. If you were to go with the alternate where it's fencing around the perimeter, the perimeter fencing, as we see it today, is something in the range of $1.7 million for a total project of about $2.7 million. And I will field questions now.
Eric, just quickly on this fencing idea. Do we need any sort of approvals from town? I mean, I know most people who put up a fence have to get approvals from the town. Do we as a school district need to get that? John, maybe you can go there?
No, you are not subject to town law. You're subject to state law. Your building department is the state education department. So any project that we do goes through the state education department, and they act as our building department.
So would a fence be aidable?
Usually, when you tie it to other educational projects, there's the ability to aid portions of that, and the percentages of that gets negotiated with SED. If you did it standalone...
Would that be against climbing?
For example, your field project is being combined with our educational projects so that that project could become aidable. So you're always looking for opportunities there to gain aid on projects that may otherwise not be. Yes.
Eric, you said, you mentioned, I think, at one of the schools, that there was film in the windows. What is that film designed to do?
So 3M and some other companies make products that are bullet-resistant film. That's basically what it's saying, saying it means that if somebody shot a bullet through, it would penetrate through that glass and the film. However, the film, as well as the silicone sealant that wraps around the perimeter, holds the glass in place. And so you can go online, there's lots of videos of different companies that show people trying to gain access through one of these things using sledgehammers or kicking or whatever it is, or multiple shots. And it tends, it's not to stop somebody from ever coming, going through that window, it's for slowing them down substantially.
And it doesn't stop a shooter? It just changes the speed at which the shooter, like in news...
It stops the shooter, it doesn't stop the shot.
Stops the shooter from entering?
It slows down anybody from entering because if you just have a regular piece of glass, you can take a sledgehammer, smash it, and you go through.
How much would it cost to put this film everywhere?
It's...
Why would we just do it in one place and then just give somebody the ability to come in and back in?
We could debate this for weeks. In general, the general understanding in the industry, your current sort of planning studies on security is to address the main entrance and the area adjacent to the main entrance to the building. Obviously, somebody could come around to the backside, and if you don't put film on every single window on your first floor, somebody could gain access a different way.
But I mean, just in general, how much are we spending for proposals? $7.4 million. How much would, how much does it cost per window? What is the cost in the film? Maybe it's worth to spend another 100.
We talked to a company that says it's $20 a square foot to add film. And we've looked at other installations where it's up to $60 a square foot. So we're still trying to totally pin that down. But the expectation is that it's, you know, when you're looking at glass, for example, if you're going to do a window wall system, something in the range of $90 a square foot. And so if you're adding $20 to that instead of 90, it's $110 or $120. So when we're looking at Greeley, for example, in those additions, we are showing the bullet-resistant film on the glass that's facing the entire parking lot, but not on the courtyard sides.
Okay, so it would be on the public-facing side.
Correct. Again, it's a deterrent. It slows any perpetrator from gaining quick access and usually deters them from continuing the action that they're trying to do.
So in general, the purpose of this type of thing at the high school, and not actually all the other schools, is to prevent somebody from unauthorized access? Is that the best way to put it?
Yes.
Yeah, I had a question about Bell, which, you know, seems very reasonable. But I'm not sure that I'm fully understanding the plan there in terms of how it's blocked off in relation to the auditorium.
Okay, so the auditorium doors in this scenario should remain locked unless in use. So they have panic hardware on, if you're in the auditorium, they have panic hardware. So if there's an event there, people could push it and go right into the lobby space. But from the lobby itself in there, they would tend to be in the locked position unless you have an event, and then you would unlock it.
Right. I just like, I have a little bit of a concern with coming in because you've got that sort of vestibule in the other areas, and this doesn't quite, like, just the layout of the school doesn't seem to allow for that. So, you know, someone could technically, it doesn't block off access to another big part of the school, I guess. That's what I'm thinking.
So we looked at this one multiple ways.
Yeah, it's a tough one.
Because this was, as you say, it's very reasonable because we really scaled this one back. If you look on the screen here, this area right here is a passageway. That's this doorway right there. The one tricky thing about Bell is the main entrance is not currently accessible. So people that are going in through the port cochere and walking in, obviously, they have to walk up a half a flight of steps to get in the building. If your accessibility is challenged, you, instead of going in this entrance, you come up to this point right here, and there's a camera, and there's a buzzer, and that's the accessible way to get into the building. So at one point, we talked about trying to take where this set of steps is here and create a ramp and get people up to this area right here, and actually create a vestibule. Today, this is open all the way to this set of doors right here. And create a second set of doors here, we can even see that, and these don't exist. This was a concept. And utilize, I believe this is the PTA office right here, as a security office, cut a new security window in that, at that point, and utilize this. So this point right here would then act as the other schools act, where people aren't entering into a space where students possibly are moving through. So your concern here is the potential that this corridor right here is used by students to get into the auditorium. And so the students are exiting out of potentially the secure zone to enter back into the auditorium. So.
There's the other door in the auditorium also, right?
Not let them use those doors during the day. I don't know if that's feasible.
Which entrance? The entrance way up here?
No, to the auditorium, the side entrance.
By the stage, the right, the stage is left.
Where the elevator is, or the ramp is.
Oh, yeah, way up here, this is where the accessible entrance is?
No, to the auditorium, inside the school.
Oh, 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 there. But that's, yes, that's a single door. It's not very wide. If you're talking about an entire grade going in there for an event, it's pretty tight. So, you know, I would think that your expectation is that you want students to be able to use these, the main steps to get into the auditorium.
That's why that first plan that we had seen seemed to make more sense from the accessibility of the actual facilities with students. But that's much more expensive?
Yes. It's more expensive because we're going to have to look at this area outside to develop a ramp. In this case, because of its historic nature, I think we'd want to be very careful in how we design that and landscape it so that it blends in with the existing architecture and get people up there. And then once you do that, the rest of this isn't very expensive. You're cutting a window in here, and you're putting a couple of doors and a little bit of heat.
What's ballpark over there?
What's the cost of doing that?
To the other, like, versus the 18,000 or something here?
I don't think we, we'd be happy to run a number there, but it's similar to somebody's other project. It's probably in the couple hundred thousand dollar range as opposed to the $20,000 range.
Right, because of the historic nature of the building.
But again, if you look at the big picture, the project that's really the most expensive is the high school project.
Right, right.
Because it's a significant addition where these are fairly minor modifications. But if that was the direction that the board would want to go, yes, we would put together a cost estimate for what that is.
If we're asking for bond and you're telling us that it's an additional $200,000 to go back to the original Bell plan, is that... Did I misunderstand?
No one's holding you.
So, that's not, that's not a real number tonight. It's just, if we were to do a ramp and to modify this exterior entrance area to be an enclosed vestibule, we would need to heat it, to provide better lighting, to cut a window in for a transaction. Those doors would have to be, you know, electrified so that we could push a button to allow them to open. So all that work, we would just, we would do another estimate. We did estimates...
I'm not holding you to a number, really. I just want a ballpark.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So if we go for this bond, that's if.
Yes.
I'm just saying that it just seems, you know, maybe short-sighted to not do one school properly and just add that incremental amount if we're, you know.
So I think we would agree that it's important to look at each one of these schools and make a decision on each one. these schools and make a decision on each one, that what we're proposing here is what should happen at each of the schools.
Right.
And if you think that we should be creating a, a main entrance here that's accessible to all and is a secure point that, uh, so students can ru- move freely in and out of the auditorium, then we should be looking at that other concept.
At that other area, okay, that's helpful. Thank you.
So, uh, I'm just trying to understand conceptually how you want to move forward. So, uh, do you want me to start soliciting input from the community, hold a community forum, do a survey, uh, start meeting with the faculty? If we were to consider placing this before the community, I think John and I ran the, um, the dates and we probably have to, you would have to approve the project by April thirtieth if you wanted to have a June vote, which means I have to work very quickly over the next, uh, month and a half with John and Joe to start getting information in order for you to, uh, determine how, whether or not you wanna make a decision, um, as for a June vote. So, would you, do you want me to start going through a process?
Right, and, and-
The community to gather more information rather than just at the, the two forums and our two committees?
I, I think that would be a wise thing, I mean, we're, we're already set back a week, we were supposed to discuss this a week ago, which would've given us more time.
Probably was, that you-
To go out to the community.
I'd like a community forum, I think that would be helpful.
Have more communication about this.
Mm-hmm.
When would we have to vote? When would we have to?
So, I'll just give you some calendars. If, if, you know, if we want to have a vote in June, okay?
What are the alternatives for a vote? If it's not in June, what would be?
Then you go into the fall.
September.
But then, we're talking about, because right now, the SED approval time is about ten months?
Yes.
It's about ten months. So, we're talking about not the summer of two thousand nineteen, we're talking about summer two thousand twenty. The reason is because they, they, they have to be summer projects, especially Greeley. There, there's nothing you can do during the school, school year. So, if we wanna do the vote in, in June and the June nineteenth, which is the third Tuesday, and then, then you count back forty-five days, the, the ad has been the paper by May fourth, which is a Friday, and then we had to place the ad by May first, which is a Tuesday. Right now, we have two board meetings scheduled for April, one is the April eleventh, which is a budget adoption, and then there is a date, April s-
April twenty-fourth.
April twenty-fourth is a BOSI. So, that usually is a-
That's at seven thirty and seven forty-five in the morning?
Usually is a very fast, you know, just approve the budget. So, right now, these are the two meetings that we have. So, we have to place the ad and you had to, just like before, you had to authorize the district clerk to all, uh, place the ad. So, we're talking about you have to have a meeting before May first.
And I don't think April eleventh will be enough time to make a decision, so we'd probably be looking at having a special meeting between April twelfth and April thirtieth. And I have more information-
Can I ask, this is a semi-remated question? Are, are we planning any other security, um, measures besides just putting up a habitat or glass wall?
Sure. Do you, Joe, do you wanna talk a little bit about what we've already done at the high school? And then, what, what we've been exploring?
Sure. But I'm, I'm asking things like student, uh, IDs, uh, yeah, I don't know, I mean, I mean, mental health stuff, I mean, stuff, other security measures? Or is this the only one we're planning to take?
No, we've done a, uh, so, Joe, you, why don't you talk a little bit about what we've done?
Should we talk about that?
But what, to what extent do we wanna talk about all the security measures that we've done?
In open forum.
All right, well, I, Joe, Jeff's asking a question, so do you, do you want us to answer it or do you wanna do it at a different-
I don't want, I don't want you to answer anything in public that you're not supposed to answer in public.
All right, so let me just-
But I don't know what that is.
Joe, sorry to put you on the spot like this, um, let me just share what we've already shared with the community. So, we've already increased our exterior cameras, um, the strategic plan is looking at aligning our social emotional program K through twelve. The high school right now has a comprehensive, um, program out of Yale called Ruler, which focuses on social emotional health. In the budget, we're increasing our social worker to a full-time position in the, um, in the high school, and you know, you've already, um, we've already hired someone this year in October that looks to work with, um, students that might be disconnected from the community, uh, from the school community. Um, we've been looking at different locking systems in the classrooms that were m- more automatic, that don't rely, that are keyless, to help improve our security in, on our, uh, in our classroom environment. So, there's been different steps that we've been taking throughout the year, not just because of what happened in Parkland, but I think that, um, because of what has just occurred in Parkland, we've, uh, the, uh, we've, I think the, uh, security at our front entrances, that issue has become more pressing for the district. So, I asked Joe to come up, maybe, Joe doesn't need to any, say anything, but he's our director of security, so. And this is all in addition to, um, adding three more security guards to Greeley, to help cover our entrances that are, uh, that didn't have, um, someone monitoring who's coming in and out of the, out of the building.
Thanks, Joe.
So, Joe said all that for the district, I just-
Can I, can I make a s- a suggestion that combines the security and the budget? I don't know, Joe, you're sitting here. Joe, you, I heard earlier, you're the guy responsible for security. Um, should we consider hiring a full-time or a part-time security, uh, person responsible for that who can focus on it?
Um, we have, we've discussed it, and I'm actually putting a report together for Dr. Ackerman.
And I think that, you know, we discussed, um, when we first met with the consultant, that while we're all, you know, incredibly sensitive and heightened, um, after Parkland, that the typical security issues that are dealt with in school districts are, you know, child abductions and custody issues and, and strangers, you know, being on campus not for necessarily overtly violent reasons, um, and that these other issues would be addressed with these man traps and, and funneling as well, um, and that are also probably the more likely security issues. And that coordinating all that across K twelve, knowing which kids are in which buildings and which parents and all that stuff, that would be a very important role for somebody to fill and a lot of work for somebody. And, you know, as we said before, Joe has a lot of responsibility, so it would be, um, you know, supportive of Jeff's, I, you know, of having somebody loose.
Or in the alter- in the alternative, we have consultants who-
Right.
-who could come in, that we have come in.
Right.
So, I'm just wondering if Joe can manage with the support of those consultants.
Yeah, I, yeah, I think, um, my opinion would be, if, if we can get a, even a part-time-
Half-time security consultant.
-security supervisor would be a big help. We're utilizing BOSIs right now, one day a week, and it's a huge help. It's been a huge help, um, the person is running our ERT teams and, uh, it's a much, you know, it's been years going really well. I think if we had somebody part-time, it would be a huge help. And I'm trying to put a whole report together of exactly what that person would do, um, to submit, to manage.
And, and as you know, we've had audits done of our other five buildings. We initially had really audited because of the, uh, complex that's going across the street, 'cause we saw that there would be different needs here than maybe in the other spaces. Um, and then, as a result of the heightened awareness of, of security now in our community because of Parkland, we expedited the, uh, the process for our other five buildings.
I, I like the idea of having some sort of community forum because, um, we would wanna get an idea how the community feels about the bond, um, how pressing an issue they, they feel it is and balancing the need for, you know, pushing forward and, and need for, you know, usually, we take our time and make sure something is appropriate and cost effective and, and, but given the, um, you know, the issues at hand, whether they want to make sure that we don't miss certain deadlines and would have to push this off for two years. And also, I'd like to, you know, get the pulse of the community in terms of, you know, people have approached us about other programs, whether it's Sandy Hook Promise and other programs, um, talking about the social emotional well-being of the students and how to incorporate that. And I think it would also be important for the community at large to know, like, what we are doing, to the extent we can say what we're doing.
Right.
We certainly can let them know what we're doing in that area, and I think there are a lot of people that really don't know the programs that we have already, so I think that would be a good opportunity.
You know, and I, in terms of, you know, doing project planning, and I, and I've done this in my previous districts, and we did a bond in my last district, this is different than an instructional bond.
Yes.
Because there's not a lot of latitude in how you design security.
Mm-hmm.
So, i- i- it, the input you receive is different.
Mm-hmm.
Because, uh, the, the concept or the, the hardware or the mechanism that you need in the front of the building is basically the same, there's not a lot of design to that process, so I just-
And it's straightforward in terms of understanding what it's for, it's not, yes.
Joe, I got a, just a question for you, just looking at that design of, of having a, a gate or something act Greeley. I, I'm going crazy thinking about the traffic pattern.
Yes.
Saying that's, like, that to me is just completely infeasible and, and, and would be a nightmare for people coming off of Roanoke to try and get into the school. Is that, is there, do you envision a way that that could work?
Well, a school, a lot of schools, there are schools that do it.
Right.
But they leave it open and, and more in after.
And, you know, it's, it's, it's free coming in when, you know, the students are coming in and out.
Right.
So, it's in the middle of the day when, you know, okay, now, all the students are in, uh, your door's locked, and now there's a guard either in a mobile cart or in a guard booth, and he's stopping everyone and calling in, you know, you know, Robert Rhodes, you have a visitor, you know, and then they send them in. That's what Harrison does.
But, but, you know, because we have an open campus, we have kids coming and going at all different, I mean, what's the-
Right.
At any given time, there's a fair number of people coming in and out.
Yeah.
So, I'm just, I don't know.
You wanna have that pass the, at center of our hill.
Right. Exactly, yeah, that's also not.
I, I think in terms of design, the easier design for us to manage would be, the first design would resecure the front of the building, it just happens to be the more expensive design. Um, while this could work, it's logistically, uh, it'll be logistically difficult and it, it won't be as tight as having a single point entrance in front of the school. But it maintains the feel of the campus.
Mm-hmm.
Because there's a fence on the perimeter rather than enclosing the front.
But I think the way Eric designed it, it still give, I mean, things change, and we've already changed the campus. When the camp, as Eric said, when the campus was first designed in the late fifties, the buildings were all separate. Now, we have pa- passages between the buildings. Things evolve and things change, I mean, it doesn't have to be ugly, it, it can be-
No, those designs are beautiful and closing in with the glass, they're lovely.
It can be, it can be functional. I'm not saying spend the money right now, I have, we have to think this through, but it, it doesn't have to, the, the look and feel of the campus doesn't have to change that much.
Is, is there an alternative to financing?
Yes.
We have to finance it through a bond? I mean, there are a couple other things, we have a twenty-one million dollar reserve, we have, uh, we haven't completed a lot of the projects in the high school in terms of, uh, like the L building, for instance, is, can we allocate some of that money toward all this? I know Christine has talked about some other alternatives, but are there any, is this a, a bond, is it binary, a bond or nothing? And if it is a bond, what happens if the community votes no? Then we just don't do anything with it? That seems kind of odd.
Then we'd have to take different measures.
Or we'd have to look at, um, taking pieces of the plan and trying to embed them in our budget. We just wouldn't be able to do them all at once, um, and then we would have to maintain the security that we currently have at the high school, which we would be doing next year anyway. It's just whether it goes into our budget or not.
Oh, and this one-
I mean, it, it goes into the budget one way or the other, but it depends how.
Right, but is there, but is there a way to do it without having to increase taxes or whatever? I don't know, I don't understand.
So, it's a, yeah, so, could, could we revote and have the community reallocate money that we've already earmarked for instructional projects? That would be a philosophical discussion, discussion that we'd have to have, I wouldn't suggest that, um, but that's certainly something we could talk about. Um, I know John would be concerned if we used fund balance to pay for the entirety of the project, but there might be pieces of this we'd be able to support out of the budget.
Well, that's what I'm trying to, I mean, I think what part of going to the community is not just, do they want single entrances, but how do, how much do they want to spend to get there?
Right.
Or how are they willing to spend it?
And I think that is a good question for me to start asking.
Right.
But that, that's where I think, um, you know, we can keep talking about this, but I think, uh, what, what the next best step is to go to the community-
Yeah.
-to see if there's an appetite and a desire to do this and, and just to package it, and you, you and I have talked, Christine, about, you know, going out and communicating this eh, with, sort of, in a holistic way, talking about not just the security features, but what we're doing regarding mental health, social emotional health and school climate issues. So, you know, showing what we're doing as a whole in the context, and putting this in, into that context.
Right.
Right.
So, okay, so then I, I have an idea of how you want me to move forward, and then the next, um, piece of information the community will receive is a mass communication from the district regarding this with a community forum set, uh, for sometime after April break.
Yes.
Can I just say one thing? Uh, Eric, I wanna publicly thank you for taking the time out of what was turned out, I heard after the fact, was a very bad day for you. Um, thank you for coming and giving me a presentation personally.
Well-
Thank you, Eric.
Thanks for staying with so long.
Joe, thank you for doing this so quickly for us, we appreciate it.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric.
You have to leave, you can stay.
I would definitely go, I mean-
I'm just, I'm just offering here.
Right, eleven. Okay, so, um, you know, so what I, what I'd like to do is go to public comment and then, you know, discuss our policies after, because-
I agree.
...we've had Lancy-
Yes, I agree.
...presentations and people are waiting, so-
Yeah, absolutely.
Can we take a final break? Yes, should we take a final break now or after public comment?
We can take a break before public comment or after?
After.
I mean, I think, um, people have been waiting, I would rather let people, unless some, somebody has to take-
No, I'm fine, I'm fine.
Okay.
Good.
So, at this point, could I, um, get a show of hands of how, how many people would like to come up for public comment, if you know already? Okay, thank, thank you for that, thank you. Um, now, because we've had many, um, many presentations and a lot of information on the budget, um, I, I would like to allow the, some flexibility to the three-minute comment period. If someone wants to extend another couple of minutes for any reason, that's fine, we don't have a lot and a lot of people coming up, and it's been, it's a lot of information.
I'm good with that.
Is everyone good with that?
Absolutely.
So, I just, um, it would be helpful for Lisa if she had some parameters since she's keeping time.
Yes.
So, what would you like her to do?
So, if they, if, if someone wants to come up and speak for three minutes or they think that they need to go lengthy, maybe they can ask permission and we can vote and then grant them additional minutes, I'm fine with that.
Just give them minutes now, I'd say five minutes to forty-eight seconds. Just six minutes.
Six minutes now, done.
I just wanna remind you of your practice-
Yeah, I don't wanna make this too still did-
No, I, I mentioned-
And make it more difficult.
Have three minutes and if they need an extension, to ask for an extension.
That's- What we're saying is we'll just give.
Extension.
Give the six minutes now, so that it's not, it's not.
I don't, I don't think that's wise in terms of procedure.
I'm, I'm not, I'm not concerned about it.
I think we should follow our procedures. I think that we give the, and then they can ask for additional and then give that.
I'm not concerned about that. Okay.
I think if we're going to have a procedure, we should, we should do that.
Okay, Lisa, you can just let, uh, your phone beep for three minutes and then the person can continue. You know, we can.
But we have, don't we have to, our procedure is that, that we have to.
You want to vote?
Grant them additional time.
Um, so I just.
Actually, I don't think it is an procedure.
I, I'd just like to rem.
We have flexibility.
Um, so just let me just remind you, we had a, we had someone who was addressing the board at the last minute meeting, who went for three minutes. Lisa indicated that she was at the three-minute mark and then you made a motion to extend her for another three minutes and then you all voted on it. So that was your, your past practice.
So I would just like to continue that. I'm happy to extend the time. I just think we should have a consistent procedure for doing so.
It's fine.
I'll do it either way.
Let's, 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 let's get going on the comments.
We have some consistency.
All right. Okay, um, please come up for public comment. At, um, you'll have three minutes initially and if you'd like to extend, we will provide that opportunity. Please come up to the microphone, um, and state your name for the record.
Susan Brown. Members' comments are on the school budget. In January, I prepared an extensive email to you about my concerns of all the challenges that we were facing. So I have to say I was very disappointed to see that the budget is proposing the largest increase in 10 years to our district in this era of minimal now salt deductions, our continued decreasing real estate values, et cetera. I would like to point out two different things I think some attention should be paid to, besides TRS and debt. The healthcare expense, um, in two years, from 2016 to 2017, until proposed for next year, has gone up, will have gone up $2,455,000, which is a 23% increase. Your current, uh, contract negotiations right now, I hope you will continue to ask employees to contribute further to their healthcare and also look at other possibilities at reducing these costs to our district. Also for salaries, salaries last year, uh, increased about $500,000, a little bit less. They're increasing this year almost a million dollars. It'd be interesting to know why that amount is doubling. Um, for fund balance, um, Jeff, getting to your issue, John originally, uh, at the meeting a year ago about fund balance, projected that the employee benefit accrual liability would be $2,725,000. If you look at what it actually was, it's $3,900,000. So it came in, so there is now $275,000 more in that fund than was projected last year at this time. So you might want to take that into consideration if looking at wanting to use that fund further. Getting to the bond. You want the, uh, community support, um, oh, sorry. You want a community support for the bond that you passed of $42,000, but, but, for $42 million, but basically, once the bond has been approved and now you've started spending money, there's been no information regarding the budget versus actual costs. There's been minimal communication to the community about how funds spent have already been spent, if they are under budget or over budget. Secondly, I believe that a new round of borrowing is going to be taking place soon. When is this happening? When is the first payment being made? Where is this being shown in the budget for next year? Part of your tax neutral strategy for the bond was the sale of property. It was estimated that you would receive $7 million for property. When is this property being sold? Are you still anticipating making $7 million on the property? If not, what is your new estimate and how are you going to make up the shortfall for the difference? It's again getting back to accountability to the community, especially now that you're going to be going possibly now for another bond for security measures. Now for that bond, I'm the first person, I'm one of the first people, person, I, I, I will be, from my own experience, um, I am someone that is very strong for, uh, for school security. I have experienced gun violence in my own life. My grandfather was shot and killed.
I move that we give it more time.
Okay, I second. All in favor?
Okay. My grandfather was shot and killed by two 16-year-olds during a daylight murder, uh, during a daylight robbery. So I have had my own personal experience with gun violence. But I'd like to note that when the $42 million bond was presented to the community two years ago, there was minimal community input as to what projects should be part of that bond. The bond was rushed through the district basically on the vision of two people who are now no longer here. There was no transparency in the process, process of how the projects were chosen and the bond and the community were not given an opportunity to give input on what the $42 million should be spent on. So now, security projects could have been part of that bond, but instead, the administration's school board at that time chose projects which were, which I think, in my opinion and in their opinion, would get the bond passed. For example, there were two turf fields added instead of one. There were four new idle lab spaces in L Building and a separate new STEM building at the high school. Why were four spaces needed? Why not two and the STEM building be put in the, in the L Building? At the time of the bond, I asked these questions several times and it has never given justification for how these decisions were made. Now, right in the back of another tragedy, the administration's school board are talking of issuing another bond. This is financially irresponsible, I believe, for our community. Before you do this, I would like to see you consider what other bond, funds the district may get from the state for this type of projects. Also, uh, for current bond projects, New York State is reimbursing as 33% of the project. Would this project also be reimbursed 33% by the state? Also, I believe you should investigate the use of some of the bond, some of the funds from the current $42 million bond. You didn't talk about the capital reserve fund, so I guess I won't talk about that. Finally, um, I would, I asked before and I have not seen anything that's gone out to the community about the new policy with the, with the new comment policy, how community members are supposed to get information and question answered by all administration and all board members. So I had asked that there could be some communication that goes out to all the community about specifically what the new policy is and now since there's no, no, no longer any dialogue with the school board, how that is supposed to happen with the community and I've not seen that happen. And asked that you still consider doing that and informing the community. Finally, on the, on the budget web, on the website, uh, the budget information finally has shown up, but it's under John Chaff's name. I think it'd be very nice if there could be a separate budget, uh, tab that's very easy for everyone to find, the same as the contracts, because right now it is still very difficult to navigate.
Judy, can I, if you have that, it sounds like you read something. Could you submit that and write it to us if you haven't?
Yeah, I'll email it to you.
Okay. Thank you, Judy.
Thank you.
Um, anyone else?
Is there anyone else here talking about my question? I don't want to be provocative. I, I'm kind of the representative for the whole group, so.
Please welcome, you're welcome to make, make comments, even if they're duplicative comments, you're, you're welcome.
I think it's just correct because we didn't, the forums we did, there wasn't a lot of board members there. So I think we, uh, all the parents have gotten together, we've sent letters.
This is the first year I've never been there. I was a travel, so.
Yep, that's fine. And I, the little book I gave you was just letters from the parents.
Yep, we got that.
I think we just wanted to make sure that we knew, you had mentioned earlier concerns. I think some of the things we haven't heard that are kind of on top of our mind as a class for the second grade next year, there's three students with hearing loss. I'm not sure if you know that, there's several students with auditory processing disorder. You look at those numbers and you look at the size of 25 students, it starts to become overwhelming. And I think there's all those studies, and I know you've read all those things. I don't want to go through too much of it, but I think one of the, uh, items I broke down just real quickly is that if you research throughout the country, for example, probably most recently Fairfax County last year went through the same thing. Premier school in Northern Virginia or school district in Northern Virginia. Sorry, it's very emotional because my daughter's in this. So, school size was the biggest issue everybody thought about. Board said to, to a person, I wish we did more to investigate what we do. And I feel like it's just very obvious that hope we'll just cut a class because of numbers and we're just trying to make a number. I ask and I beg the board to look further, look deeper, try to make it work out. Don't just say, well, John, when I told you about the number, it was in the middle school. If you look at the middle school number, that'll think it was. There's a number this year that's close to 25. I just had a teacher who our parent passed last year, they said, oh, you keep talking about this contingency. He didn't use it. And so the art group is concerned that you keep saying contingency, that you didn't use it when you had it. There's reserves, um, there's, the athletic fund gets all these boosters and money from other different areas. We're looking for one section to be filled. That's it. So if you could just consider that while you're making your vote, we'll see you again.
We very much.
Could you state your name for us?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
That's the easiest part. Michael, come on, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael.
And we do appreciate comments.
Um, is there anyone else? I'm sorry, Jane.
No, go ahead. I just wanted to say, we appreciate your comments.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, anyone else? You're very welcome to come up to the microphone? Nope? Okay. All right then.
I move that we take a, uh, seven-minute break till 11:15.
Okay, I don't know that we need to vote. Do we have consensus on a break?
It's fine, sorry.
No, the PTA just hangs in there.
Thank you.
Oh, man, look at that leadership.
Wow.
Okay.
All right. We will turn to, oh, so we're back?
We're back.
David, are we, okay.
Oh, I don't know which one we're gonna go for.
So we'll turn to item, to committee reports. Uh, we have two policies here, but are there any reports from other committees at this time?
Wait just one second.
I know we have an audit meeting set up.
Right, we'll work on that.
Right? So.
I'll be bored next time.
Okay.
Wellness method, there's something that we need to report for now. Do we need to report anything on wellness?
We're preparing this back.
Yeah.
Okay. And we talked a lot about facilities, so.
Yep.
No facilities report, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, so we'll move on to the policy. Um, we have two policies. One of those is a change that was recommended by, um, Interactive.
Yep.
And it's the removal of one word.
Which one?
The actual meaning, the actual meaning of the policy is the same, but I do agree that the word, um, does not look good. It, it's removing, um, the word unwelcome. Although we did say in the policy that any.
Which one were we looking at? The first one?
Uh, we're looking at, I'm sorry, we're looking at 2.2, so I'm sort of taking these two together. We're talking.
This is 5080.
5080, so we removed the word unwelcome, although later on.
And the number two.
Although later on, we did say that any of the, um, mentioned conduct by an adult would be deemed unwelcome per se. But we, we took, we took out that word.
Can I ask more of the question?
So the, the meaning is the same. We always had this meaning, but it just makes it crystal clear. So. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Jeff.
I just can ask a question, if that's the only change. I have one other question. And we do mention specifically who the title, nine officers are. Does that mean every time somebody leaves the district, we have to, uh, change the policy?
Yes.
That should be in the reorg meeting every July. That, that should be reviewed.
But if someone leaves in the middle, then we have to amend the policy.
But we can't just put it in the reorg meeting and not put it in the policy? We're putting the policy to see the reorg meeting?
Because it might change.
It just seems like, oh, we have to change it every time somebody.
It's not the role.
So we talked about this with Margot and she had said that it was important in the policy that the contact information was more clear.
Right. Right, so actually, so I take that back. There is, no, there's no change at this time, but then.
Just the term unwelcome.
But there will be, and, and, um, sorry, I did this backwards, but it's okay.
That's the easier one.
That was the easier one.
Well, but I, I had an issue with this one. I'm sorry.
Uh, I know you had an issue with the way that it's, um, the way the introduction reads. Um, and we could address that, but actually, we are going through all of the policies?
Yes.
And to make them all consistent?
Right.
So that would, that will be part of the reworking of all of the policies.
That's fine. I, I mean, I had more of an issue with the terms his and her, which I think are problematic.
Oh, that's another, oh, yeah. Um, right.
So, and that's, that's several, there's two places in here and I think those need to be changed. And I think those should be changed now?
Yeah, it's the first reading.
Yeah, I feel like we did that in other areas. We definitely corrected that.
We did, but there may be, there may be some areas here. So it's a, it's a long policy book and.
Yeah, so I mean, I don't know if we're supposed to, are you supposed to, it's just a first reading, so we can just say this now or?
Yeah, this is.
So, so yes, I did have a question which I, I sent in terms of reorganizing and I, I found the introduction wordy and, and I didn't really want to change a lot of it, but I wanted to move the positioning of it, um, to flip the, the second paragraph first and, and reword it. But the, the bigger thing is that when we say, um, in the first paragraph where it is now, that the last sentence says this policy prohibits sexual harassment discrimination based on the actual perceived sexual orientation of a student as well as gender discrimination intended to demean or intimidate a person or persons because of his or her gender. That's a problematic phrase. And I think that we need to change that to read, you know, demean or intimidate a person or persons based on gender or gender identity. I think we need to fix that.
Everyone okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
And I think then in the first.
Wait, what are you changing his and her to what?
It's, instead of saying to intimidate a person or persons because of his or her gender.
Right here.
We should say because of gender or gender identity.
Right, okay, good.
And then in paragraph under definitions, number one, what says define sexual harassment, uh, different or same sex because of his or her sex or actual perceived sexual orientation. I think again, we should say because of.
There?
A person's.
There, there is the word.
Okay, because of their, you know, sex. And I thought gender identification should be in there, but it's okay. Um, I think. Person of a different or same sex because of their. Actual or perceived sexual orientation. So this is about, right, orientation, not gender. There's, there's two different issues there. Because it says because of his or her sex. Well, but we're taking that out because of their actual or perceived sexual orientation. Okay. Okay, you could say because of their actual or perceived sexual orientation. I'm okay with that.
Actually, you could just do perceived because that includes actual.
Yeah, because what's actual? Because of their sex or, sorry, or actual. Right, because I was gonna say because of that person's sex or perceived sexual orientation. So something like that.
Right. Because of their actual or perceived sexual orientation.
Well, we were saying get rid of actual because that's troublesome also.
Well, someone could experience, um, discrimination because of their actual, even their perceived.
Well, why can't we?
Could be different than their actual.
Right, right.
And they, and they may.
You perceive yourself to be one sex, but you're being discriminated because of the sexual.
Because of the others. So I think, I think the way it is is more comprehensive. I think we should leave the word actual or, and, you know, we should leave the phrase actual or perceived.
Why don't we just say because of their sex or sexual orientation? Why do we have to say actual or perceived? I, I remember putting that in there specifically because you didn't want someone being harassed because someone assumed their orientation.
Right.
You know, that they were making references because they had made an assumption.
Right, so I think this covers all possibilities of harassment and discrimination.
I don't know if we can check, you know, with Marco, because like there are current, there's current language that really should be in here in terms of, you know, federal standards and a lot of people, states are changing a lot of these terms.
Right.
So I'd like to change it properly and make sure, um, my understanding is, I mean, the his or her is, is the big thing, but I think we can say, you know, uh, is directed against a person of a different or same sex because of their sex or sexual orientation. Whether it's actual or perceived, I don't know why we need that language.
Because, because someone else can have a perception about the person and harass them based on their perception. And so we were trying.
But it doesn't matter. They're harassing them based on their sexual orientation, whether it's actual or perceived. It doesn't really.
Well, they may not be their own sexual orientation. Maybe someone's perception of them.
Right.
But it's still a subject matter of sexual orientation. I, I don't know.
I don't think this language is harmful. I think it adds.
It's broader.
It's broader.
That's, that's fine. So if we get rid of, if we, if you want to change it to their. And then there's another one, number four, there's another his or her. Yeah, I was gonna look because I thought there might be another one. Yeah. Uh, and they would treat a person differently because of their gender.
Got it, Lisa?
Okay.
Okay. All right, so 2.1.
2.1 is a new policy.
Do we, this is, I don't want to throw a monkey wrench in here, but I don't know if there's, we have any other changes? Can we, uh, do we need to have a second reading?
Yeah.
That's our, our general policy. Having one meeting is an exception.
Okay. Just.
Unless there's an urgency.
If it was only unwelcome, I would say yes, but is there other changes?
But there's.
Okay.
So what I would say about this new policy is that it covers a lot of behaviors that are, that are more subtle, that could be precursors to sexual misconduct.
Right.
And it's a, it's a standalone sexual misconduct policy. It's not grouped in with harassment.
Right.
And discrimination. So standalone, we thought was important.
Yes.
Um, because Sue brought this to us. That was very helpful.
Yes, no, I think it's very.
And Margot, um, helped as well, so.
I think it's in line with some of the behaviors that Carol Sheikchaf identified as boundary crossing and it provides this in writing for our faculty to refer to.
Right.
And will help, and it help us have better conversations with them when there are concerns.
Right, so. I, no, I think.
Anyone at this time have any?
The other thing is with this particular policy, this was one of the recommendations to have something that is very easily available to employees of the district and they can read it, it makes sense. It's not.
What's expected, what the standards are.
Exactly. And the language here is very understandable.
No, I, I, yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this, yeah.
So anyone have any, um, suggestions for any revisions at this time?
Why is the word if in yellow, honey?
I, I just saw that.
Yeah, I, that was my question too.
I saw that and, um, I think that's a mistake.
Well, since this is a PDF, maybe it was a note.
It's on my hard copy as well.
What was that again, that you just said?
In the, uh. In the, uh.
Second page?
Second page, right above prohibition of retaliatory behavior, the third lineup says if, but if is highlighted for some reason. You'll see it in yellow on your screen.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, here it is, I see it.
But my, with this, like, if you see that the intro to this is saying that the Board of Ed, you know, requires employees to maintain a professional standard, et cetera, it sort of sets the ground rules. And in the other policy, that's very lowered, that's the second paragraph. I think we have to flip them, and I think we need some consistency to kind of lay the ground. So, that was my point with that, by the way.
The one point, it's one, two, the one says providing alcohol or drugs to students, bringing students in the absence of parent, guardian supervision to drink alcohol or take drugs in the presence of an employee.
Where are you reading exactly?
Point should we ever have parent, guardian supervising and taking drugs and alcohol? Right there, about one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight.
What about, what about school nurses? They give, they administer drugs.
Illegal drugs.
It doesn't say illegal drugs, providing alcohol or drugs. School nurse provides drugs to a student whose parents have allowed them to, they're not in their presence, though, so we're, we're basically creating a fault in the policy for the nurses.
Prescription medication.
Pardon me?
They're administering prescription medication, so do you want us to?
I think it should be.
Write that in there?
Define the word drugs.
Provide alcohol or drugs.
Or illegal or non-prescribed.
Non, non, yeah, I don't know the language, I just think.
Could be prescribed for somebody, it's not that.
Pardon me?
We can, you can put. Illicit? Can't we put illicit? Illegal or un.
Unprescribed.
Yeah, but that's giving a non-prescribed motrin to somebody, yeah.
Could be legal drugs, but given by the wrong person.
Yeah, because you can give an Adderall or something.
I think it has to be either, you know, other than nursing staff or some, I don't know.
Well, provide an exception, that covers.
We have, we have.
We have policies about.
Define drugs and define, at one point, should a parent or guardian supervising.
In the absence of parent or guardian supervision.
Christine, who can?
I think we should strike that.
I know.
I think that's not appropriate.
Can a teacher give an motrin to a student or just the nurse?
No, just the nurse.
Okay.
So, I'll work on that language with Margot.
All right, otherwise, I think it's fine.
And I think we should strike the language, like Jeffrey pointed out, strike in the absence of parent or guardian supervision. We should strike that. All right.
You know, what point should we put there?
How strange language. Anything else, going through this?
Okay, so we'll come up with revisions and send them to you for the 11.
Okay.
Very good.
Thank you.
Moving on.
Have we finished it?
Yes.
It's generally has been my opposition to a consent agenda, but might I suggest, might I move, I will move, that we take the entire rest of the agenda.
No, because, look, we, the most of the agenda.
Jeff, I.
No, we cannot, we cannot, we have, we have CSE summaries, you can't do that.
I have waited so long for him to say that.
By the time you want to do that, it's not possible.
I try, I try.
So, let's move to a recommended action on personnel, item 4.1.
I recommend 4.1 instructional as presented.
I move that we accept her recommendation. I second that.
Okay, you can have that.
Thanks.
Questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 non-instructional as presented.
I accept the superintendent's recommendation.
I second that.
All in, comment, questions, all in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve item 5.1, the CSE summaries from 2017-18, as amended with, motion to approve the CSE summaries of 2017-18 as amended by adding an additional summary from March 14, 2018, as reported to the board on March 21, 2018.
I move item 5.1.
As, as third?
As amended.
As amended.
I second that.
I'll take care of it.
I will get this back to you, so you'll have the exact.
We got it. Did we have a second?
Yeah, Allison, Allison, Jane.
We, we got it, Lisa, you've got it. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you get the first and second? Allison and Jane? Okay. So, may I have a motion to accept items 5.2, 5.3, and 5.4 together? These are all the CSE summaries reported to the board on March, remaining summaries reported to the board on March 21 and March 28.
Some moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we will move to items.
5.18.